Good afternoon, everyone. I will call the regular meeting of Stratford City Council to order. And we'll begin this afternoon's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Earlier this year, the federal government had passed legislation to recognize September 30th as a federal statutory holiday known as the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. The city of Stratford encourages all residents to take some time Thursday to reflect on the tragic history and legacy of Canada's residential school system and to learn more about the truth and reconciliation commission's calls to action. Orange flags with every child matters printed on them will be flown at City Hall and all other municipal buildings on Thursday. Citizens are invited to come to City Hall to lay an orange shirt or a pair of children's shoes on the steps of City Hall as a symbolic gesture to recognize and honor the children, families and communities affected by residential schools in Canada. Some orange shirts will be made available for those who do not have one of their own place. Citizens are encouraged to observe a moment of silence at 2:15 p.m. to mark the first discovery of 215 unmarked graves at the site of the former residential school in Kamloops, B.C. More unmarked graves in Canada were subsequently discovered. To learn more about the history and legacy of the residential schools in Canada, please visit the National Center for Truth and Reconciliation website, The Stratford Public Library is also offering Orange Shirt Day Learning Kit and can be picked up at the library this week. I myself will be attending City Hall front steps to lay an orange shirt. I know members of council will be joining throughout the day as their schedules permit. We'd encourage all residents to take a moment to be part of this national remembrance of the truth and reconciliation. And of course, the commission and the report that was presented on behalf of our indigenous community. At this time, is there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Over to you, man clerk.
To your worship, item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of the corporation of the city of Stratford dated September 13th be adopted as printed.
Move by. Counselor Bunting and second by Counselor Burbak. Discussion. If not, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, let's carry.
Item four is adoption of the addendum, and just prior to today's meeting, an addendum was circulated, and there is a motion that the addendum to the regular agenda of council and standing committee dated September 27th to add a delegation request and receipt of correspondence to the planning and heritage committee agenda be added to the agenda.
By Counselor Ritzman, second by Counselor Clifford, that the addendum be adopted for today's meeting. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Item five is reported the committee of the whole and camera session. Item 5.1 at the September 13th session under the municipal act as amended, matters concerning the following items were considered. Item 5.1 being an appointment to the Stratford Town and Gown Advisory Committee and item 5.2 being an appointment to the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee. And both of those items were considered under the personal matters about identifiable individual section under the act. And there is a motion that Annika Williamson be appointed as the administrative representative from the University of Waterloo Stratford campus to the Stratford Town and Gown Advisory Committee for a one-year term to November 14th, 2022, or until a successor is appointed by council. And that Sammy Orr be appointed as the youth representative to the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee for a one-year term to November 14th, 2022, or until a successor is appointed by council.
Motion to approve is Counselor Burbak and seconding is Counselor Vazalacos. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Thank you.
Item 5.2, just prior to today's session, an in-camera session was held under the act, consider the following items. Item 4.1, city industrial land pricing policy annual review under the proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality. Item 5.1, QP Local 1385 and 197 Inside-Outside Workers Collective bargaining update under labor relations or employee negotiations. Item 6.1. It's a proposed acquisition of property for Part II on 44R-3969. Item 6.2 was request to purchase city-owned land update for Downing Street. And item 6.3 was request to purchase city-owned land update for McNabb Street. And those three items were all considered under the proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality exemption. And at the in-camera session, direction was given on all items.
Thank you.
Moving to item six, hearings, deputations and presentations. Item 6.1 has a presentation by the St. Mary's Healthcare Foundation. And there is a motion that the presentation by the St. Mary's Healthcare Foundation be heard.
Motion by Counselor Ingram, second by Counselor Burbak. That the presentation be heard. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Scott, can you hear us?
Yes. Hello.
Good afternoon, Mr. Graham. I'll turn it over to you and the representatives with you on behalf of the St. Mary's Healthcare Foundation.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Your worship, Mayor Matheson and honorable council members of the city of Stratford. It is my pleasure to present the hospital renewal project on behalf of the St. Mary's Healthcare Foundation. My name is Scott Graham. I am a direct, a new director on the healthcare foundation. I'm a lifetime resident of St. Mary's, having been involved in egg farming my entire working career and a director of Egg Farmers of Ontario until stepping down his chair in 2019. We're all very excited about the hospital renewal project. The project need and budget figures are outlined in the brief which was sent to council recently. The upgrades will provide a facility that meets the expectations of the Canadian infectious disease control, which has been recognized by Huron Perth Healthcare Alliance. The St. Mary's Memorial Hospital and the Tradition Mutual Centre of Wellness provides a vital service to our community. And this project enhances the strong partnership of the HPHA. In regard to this partnership, St. Mary's Healthcare Foundation has contributed $250,000 to the Stratford Hospital over the past 10 years. In the essence of time, I would ask Dr. John Chittle to give his perspective on this project. John on the line. Hello.
Staffer, just seeing if Dr. Chittle is there will just be one moment.
Sorry, Scott, I don't see John on the line at the moment.
Okay, that's fine. I guess I would just move, is there, maybe, I know our fundraising chair, Ken McCutcheon, is on. I might ask Ken for any additional comments in regard to, to the project.
Yes, thanks, Scott. It's Ken McCutcheon. I'm a former board member for the St. Mary's Healthcare Alliance. Just a quick bit of background to this project. It originally started in 2016. The idea at that time was a realization that the, the hospital was dated inside and needed a renewal project. So we did some initial fundraising to do that, but with the onset of COVID-19, it became quite apparent that the facility was not up to standards for infectious disease. So the project has, has expanded significantly. It's gone from a $1.25 million project to a $6 million project. So that's the reason why we are back into a fundraising mode on this project. It is obviously, it's quite vital, given the the infectious disease requirements in, in order to be able to treat patients without having to send them to other facilities. So it, I'm going to turn it back over to Scott. That's just basically why we're doing what we're doing in that hospital.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken. Is there any questions from the honorable council members or your worship?
Members of council, does anyone have a question for Mr. Graham with regard to the project? Now, Scott, my question would be if, have you been able to put together any background information with regard to the cross-use of the facility as part of the HPHA and the residents of Stratford? And the services that we access within your facility?
And in terms of, of the number of hospital visits over the last couple of years, I think it totals about 2,337 based on the numbers we have. So that's about 9% of the visits. And based on what our funding requirements are for this project, that figures out is again with what our ask is, which is $54,000. So I think there's been a significant amount of, of Stratford residents that obviously have access to St. Mary's Hospital. And obviously, we've had lots of, of St. Mary's residents who take, you know, advantage of, of the Stratford Hospital. So I guess that does show the partnership that we have between our hospitals and, and, you know, that strong partnership that we have, which I think, you know, is, is certainly beneficial to, to everybody, you know, in this, in this immediate community. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. Do you have anything further? Counselor Vazalacos?
And this may be completely outside of the scope of what we're talking about here, but has there ever been a discussions around merging the different foundations, simply because we, we've had these conversations before about which citizens go to which hospitals and for what services. And as HPHA starts to, has, has created situations where different services are at different hospitals, I'm just wondering if there's ever been a discussion about merging the foundations into a single foundation that could then actually do the work that's needed in the context of the, the network of hospitals as a whole, as opposed to each one as a one-off?
Well, thanks for the question. I would have to refer that to somebody that's maybe got a little more experience than I do. Again, I just got on the St. Mary's Healthcare Foundation in June. So I think it, it certainly would certainly deserve some, some, you know, investigation, I guess. But I would have to, I think we'd have to, I'd have to refer to my chair and maybe some other people in regard to if there has been any talk in that regard.
Scott, it's Deborah. With permission, I can, I can try to answer that question to the, to the group.
Sure.
Sure. So I'm Deborah Weisman. I'm the VP of Partnerships and the Chief Nursing Executive for HPHA. And like Scott, fairly new in my role, about eight months in. As I understand it, when the hospital merger took place years ago, there, there was a fairly significant highlight to the individuality that each community supports and that there were conversations about a global, a more global opportunity for foundations as well as other things. And with the strong support of individual communities still well in play and recognizing the nuances and individuality of these particular sites and their position within the communities, they have been maintained at independent foundation perspective. They operate separately from the Health, Huron Healthcare Alliance directly. So at this point, they still will maintain their independence. They are linked for various opportunities for information and collection of data and other, but otherwise they are independent.
You, Deborah. Counselor Ritzman?
If, if I may make a motion to refer this request to the 2022 budget discussion.
Thank you, a seconder for that. Counselor Seven. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Thank you. To our guests on the phone, the budget meetings are coming up with the city of Stratford, and our clerk's office will be in touch to inform you when we'll continue the discussion with regard to this request. And I thank you very much for providing the information in advance in your presentation today.
Thank, thank you very much. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
To your worship, item seven, orders of the day. Item 7.1 is a resolution regarding the multi-functional digital photocopiers request for proposal results. And there is a staff recommendation that the proposal for supply, installation and servicing of fully multi-functional digital photocopiers be awarded to Toshiba Tech Canada Business Solutions Incorporated for the four-year term from November 1st, 2021 to October 31st, 2025.
Move by Counselor Gaffney and second by Counselor Ingram. Questions? Counselor Clifford?
Yeah, the question I have with, and I've heard this a long time, we've got computers, but we're still like on council, we're not making all this paper anymore. Are we cutting back on the amount of paper? It seems like we, we have things in the cloud and all kinds of other things, but is our needs for photocopies increasing or decreasing over the years?
Ms. Krueger, please.
I can answer this question on behalf of the author of the report. There was an analysis done as part of this renewal, and the, the trends are definitely declining. As we've indicated in the report, there, there is an expectation that the, that the costs will continue to decline as we move towards more paperless. It's just difficult to really estimate exactly the impact at this point. I hope that answers your question.
Counselor Clifford, thank you. Anything further? All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Item 7.2 is a resolution regarding the COVID-19 vaccination policy for the corporation of the city of Stratford. And there is a staff recommendation that the city of Stratford's report on the COVID-19 vaccination policy outlining status disclosure and safety compliance for all employees, volunteers and contractors be received.
Move by. Counselor Beadie and seconded by. Counselor Bunting, discussion. Counselor Vazalacos?
Um, I'm just wondering if we could have a discussion around whether council is included in this vaccination policy, and if not, whether we could have a discussion around that after we approve this, if we approve this.
Yes, we can do that. Anything further on the policy this time? If not, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, and it's carried. Counselor Vazalacos, would you like the floor?
Yes, I would. I don't think that the administrative policy covers council, so I would like to move that council be subject to the same administrative policy around vaccination. I think if we're going to actually expect our employees to follow a vaccination policy, then we should show some leadership and do so. I think also we have the opportunity to participate electronically. So at some point in the future, if we are doing person meetings, I think it's appropriate to have council declare whether the council members be fully vaccinated or participate electronically. I think it shows leadership, and I also think it protects our staff and the public who are present.
Thank you. Counselor Gaffney, are you seconding that?
I have your worship.
Further discussion on the proposed motion? If not, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's unanimous. We'll carry. Thank you.
Item 7.3 is a resolution regarding a request for exemption from noise control by law for the 2021 Stratford Symphony Orchestra performances. And following the publishing of the agenda, the city received correspondence from the organizers that this request was no longer required due to some amendments that they made to their event. So we are going to be removing this from consideration.
Thank you.
Moving to item eight, business with previous notice has been given, and there's none scheduled. Moving on to item nine, reports of the standing committee. Item 9.1 is reported the planning and heritage committee, and there's one item listed for consideration, and that was item 9.1.1. Modification to draft plan, draft approved plan of subdivision 31T18-0018. And that was the motion that the development of urban design guidelines for infill residential housing in the city of Stratford be referred to staff for review and preparation for a report to council.
Thank you. Moving, Counselor Ritzman, second Counselor Burbak, discussion. Counselor Ingram?
Thank you. So I happened to miss the last council meeting. And I have a couple of questions regarding this specific application that I'm wondering if the manager of planning might be able to answer. The first one would be how much of the residential intensification target has been achieved within the built boundary since it was set in 2013?
Through your worship, this is something that's not currently actively monitored by planning staff. This is something that we'll have to monitor as part of the background review to the official plan update, but isn't monitored on a yearly or bi-yearly basis at this point in time.
So this is a measurement target that was spoken to in the report, but we, we have no we have no information on that particular target?
Through your worship, so that's correct. We don't currently monitor achievement of that target. I would note that it is a target and there is no cap, so if we were happen to be trending towards achievement of that target, exceeding that target wouldn't preclude a decision on an infill application in the city.
No, but without the information, it makes it really hard to know whether we're trending to achievement or, or not. So that's something that I'd like staff to, to perhaps do some digging on and, and look into if they can. Further, with respect to this particular application, again, I'm wondering if there's going to be a condition in the agreements of purchase and sale or lease regarding no parking being available on Worsley Street, that there's no available visitor parking. And that the, the potential front facade of the dwellings are going to be 1.65 meters from the easement line that is proposed. And therefore, there's really only space for parking in the garage and potentially one in the driveway if that easement is not being utilized. So if there, if there's a possibility to put that condition in an agreement of offer and purchase, or sorry, agreement of purchase and sale or lease that might ward off some complaints coming in.
Through your worship, so at the last planning and heritage committee meeting, the draft plan of subdivision modifications were referred to staff to do some further consultation with the city solicitor on some potential options to deal with building elevations. So the intent of staff is that we will bring back a revised set of draft plan conditions at the October 12th meeting. So certainly staff could consider including a clause that requires that type of warning in all offers of purchase and sale and lease for the, the future lots.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Thank you.
Item 9.2 is reported the Finance and Labor Relations Committee, and there are three items with different consideration as follows. Item 9.2.1 is the destination Stratford Q2 update. Item 9.2.2 is the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation update to July 2021. And item 9.2.3 is the Q2 operating budget variance report as of June 30th, 2021.
Move by Counselor Gaffney and seconded by Counselor Clifford, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Thank you.
Item 10 is notice of intent, and item 10.1 is notice of public meeting under the Planning Act. And Stratford City Council will hold a public meeting on Monday, October 18th at 5:00 p.m. to hear all interested persons with respect to the following planning application. Zone change application Z12-21 for seven and nine Colbert Street. And further details can be found in the attached notice.
Thank you.
Item 11 is reading up the bylaws, and there are two bylaws with different consideration as follows. The first being item 11.1 to amend the appointments by law. And 11.2 acceptance of proposal for the supply, installation and servicing of multi-functional digital photocopiers. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council president.
Will they be taken collectively? Counselor Vazalacos and Counselor Ritzman? All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's unanimous. We'll go to first and second reading. Move by Counselor Seven and Counselor Beadie. That bylaws 11, 1 and 2 be read a first and second time. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Moving third and final reading. Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Burbak. For bylaws 11, 1 and 11, 2. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Thank you.
Item 12 of the consent agenda, are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Seeing no hands, we'll go to new business. And seeing none, I would take a motion to adjourn for standing committee with community services being first. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Clifford. All those in favor. And that's carried. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Community Services Committee meeting to order. And number two is disclosure of our pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none. Item three is the subcommittee minutes, which you have before you. Item four is delegations, which we have none scheduled. Item five is report of the city clerk. With item 5.1 being a request to reduce the number of citizen representatives positions on the Communities and Bloom Advisory Committee. We have a staff recommendation that the terms of reference for the Communities and Bloom Advisory Committee be amended to reduce a composition of citizen representatives from eight to six positions. Is there any discussion on this, or can I get a mover for the? Move by Counselor Gaffney and second by Counselor Bunting. I'll call the question. All in favor. And that is carried. Thank you. Item number six is reported the manager of transit with item 6.1 being the Saturday on-demand transit service update. And we do have a staff recommendation that the manage, management report titled Saturday on-demand transit service be received for information. Sorry, questions? Move by Counselor Burbak. And second by Counselor Ingram. Is there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you. Item 6.2 is the ad hoc transit committee update. And there is a recommendation, staff recommendation, that the management report titled the ad hoc transit committee update be received for information. And that the ad hoc transit committee be disbanded, and any future operational matters concerning transit be brought forward to the attention of the staff or governance related matters to the community services subcommittee. And just as an update, this committee did meet last week for their final meeting, and they did have their own motion that this committee be disbanded. Motion by Counselor Ritzman and second by Counselor Clifford. Any questions or comments? Counselor Seven?
Yeah, thank you. I did have a question about to understand that the, do we have any more sort of background about why they chose to disband the committee?
If the manager, Mike Mosley, is available, have him to provide comment?
Yes, good afternoon. And through the chair. Basically, they were kind of in line with, with the body of, of the report that I submitted, that the majority, the vast majority of concerns or improvements or anything based on ridership and the technology part of it. At the start of the term, I actually, a lot of this was being implemented, either completed or was to be completed. So basically through the term, it was more or less an update on what the ad hoc committee wanted to see as far as improvements that I was presently working on or was going to be working on as time went on. And, and we found that for the meetings that we did have, it was, it was mostly just updates on the progress of For the meetings that we did have, it was it was mostly just updates on the progress of whether it was new technology, new fleet. Whatever the case may be. I provided that and they were quite satisfied with the with the results.
If there's no, sorry, to man clerk?
The chair, if I could just clarify that the motion on the floor is that the management report be received and then that the ad hoc transit committee be disbanded. That is presently the motion.
Thank you. There's no further questions or comments. I'll call it, all in favor. And that's carried. Thank you. Item seven is report the major recreation and marketing with item seven point one be. To request to develop a strategic master plan for recreational services at the subcommittee meeting. The resolution came forward that the development of a strategic master plan for recreational services be referred to staff and to the two thousand and twenty-two budget deliberation. Moved by councillor Burbak. Second by councillor Basilakos. Councillor Gaffney, question?
I just was wondering. And maybe I've missed it. There's no report or anything attached to this. It sort of seems to be a pretty. Open-ended request being made. I don't know if there's any parameters or anything attached to this or. Or that's that's my concern, just giving somebody a blank check, I think. Not literally.
And if I might all, I'll call on Brad Herndon just to provide some commentary on this.
Hi, sorry, through the chair, what I'm missing, what item are we at? Are we on the allocation of time at the Agriplex Fieldhouse?
We're on item seven point one request to develop a strategic master plan for recreational services.
Ah, okay. Yes, this came up, sorry, at the last subcommittee meeting. And I believe it was supposed to be referred back to staff for review. So at this time, we would have no idea what it would cost, what the scope of work would be, not to say that it's not. A good idea to look into developing a new master plan, but certainly more more digging would be required before we bring something back to council.
Thank you.
Councillor Basilakos.
So I don't I don't sit on on the subcommittee, but I do think I think the master plan for recreation services is quite old and probably quite dated. But I think also a follow-up to that is for a number of years now and mostly councillor Ingram and I think myself a couple of times have talked about. Looking at some of the metrics around our our recreational services and cost recovery and some of that information. And so. I think that it is sort of time, given the age of the last. Master plan that it be looked at again and also incorporate some of those other pieces that we've been asking for over the years to 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 help sort of guide, guide future planning.
And I have councillor Ingram and then councillor Burbak.
Thank you. And just to piggyback on that, we had talked about a sports tourism strategy for many years. And it would make sense to me that this would tie into that.
Thank you. Councillor Burbak?
Thank you. Yeah, just a little background from the subcommittee discussion. When we were talking about the the item that's coming next, seven point two. And the allocation of space, it did occur to me that would be a good idea for us to have a master plan. So I did look into. What we had already as far as a recreation plan and it was created in two thousand and five and. It ended, its scope ended in in two thousand and eighteen. So we're three years without a a recreation master plan. So I I think it's. A really great idea, especially to look at our facilities. How are they being used? What do we have? Do we need more or less? Are there people or organizations that we can partner with? And what what are the demands on the space? I think it would be a really good idea to have an overall look at at what we have and what we need. So that that was a little background to how this item was, it was to be referred to staff, I think.
That's correct. Thank you, councillor Burbak. Is there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all called question, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you. Item seven point two. Is the distribution of rental use of the Stratford Agriplex Fieldhouse and. There was a wholesome discussion at subcommittee regarding this matter. And staff recommendation is that council refer the negotiations of the Stratford Basketball Association's use. Of the Agriplex Fieldhouse back to staff. And that staff move to develop a facility allocation policy in consultation with all the user groups. Moved by councillor seven, second by councillor Burbak. Again, I'll open up for conversation councillor Clifford.
Yeah, at at the time when we were talking about it, the, I think the soccer association was asking about Friday evening. I'm just asking, has that been, like, has it been solved yet or is that up in the area of what's going to happen? Because the basketball people were saying Friday isn't an evening that was advantageous to that group. So I'm because asking what's happening on Friday as far as soccer is concerned.
Thank you councillor Clifford. I will again ask our manager of recreation Brad Herndon to write some comments on this, please.
Thank you through the chair. So yes, adult soccer, they have an annual contract with us for use of the field house on Friday evenings. Their their contract is still pending. Based on what we can agree to with Stratford Basketball Association who would like to use Friday nights as well. So our, as part of the report that you see in front of you, it is asking Stratford Basketball to. Immediately make a decision whether they would like Friday nights. I know that their decision is also contingent on. Community use of schools. So the school board's releasing their gym use. If they were able to get into local schools, I I don't think that they would want Friday nights. So but it it does keep some groups hanging in the balance here. So. As part of this being referred back to staff, if that is the wish, we'd like to go back to basketball to say, could you let us know right now, do you want Friday night? If they don't want Friday night, then we can certainly. Get a contract with adult soccer and Babington could have their space back. I should mention though as well, there is an offer on the table with adult soccer that we do have select Saturdays at the Agriplex available as well, should they wish to run a leak on Saturday. So it would mean changing days from Friday to Saturday. So that is also in front of adult soccer at this point. So there's some options on the table that we would like to get sorted out.
Thank you, Mr. Herndon. Any further questions or comments? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you. Item seven point three is the Stratford Pickball Association Youth Initiative and we do have a staff recommendation. Or subcommittee recommendation that council refer the youth initiative request from the Stratford Pickball Association to staff for further review and analysis. And for the public to be consulted as part of the review. Moved by councillor Gaffney. Second by councillor Burbak. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all called question, all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you, everyone. Item eight is for the information of the committee and the updates are there. If there's nothing further, I'd call a motion for adjournment. Moved by councillor Clifford and second by councillor Ingram, all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you, everyone.
Social Services is next.
I'd call the social services committee to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, I move to the subcommittee minutes are attached. You can read them there for the from the September fourteenth meeting. Delegations, there's none scheduled. Number five, report of the manager of housing, the two thousand and twenty-one approved alternate AMR and Britannia Street Housing Project rent increases. Would you like to speak on behalf of this, Kim?
Thank you through the chair. I'll have the manager of housing speak on the first two reports.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kim, through the chair. These these two reports. Are in regards to our, the rents that. The rent for Britannia. We're looking, proposing a one point two percent increase in in rent at two thirty Britannia on January first, twenty twenty-two. And that's that's to, that's in line with guidance from the province and it's in order to. Put funding towards capital reserves and. Manage ongoing and increasing costs. The other report is in regards to the alternate average market rents and that is a process. That we undertake in partnership with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing and we. Did an environmental scan of the. Average market rents in Stratford, Perth and St Mary's and proposed an alternate. Average market rent, which you can find in the report.
Thank you. So I need a mover for that. The report titled two thousand and twenty-two approved alternate and average market rent and Britannia Street Housing Project rent increases. Be received for information, including the alternate average market rent. That have been approved by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing for the city of Stratford, county of Perth, the town of St Mary's for two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. And that staff be authorized to implement the proposed market rates for the Britannia Street Housing Project for two thousand and twenty-two. Councillor Gaffney's moving that, councillor Bunty's seconding it. Any questions? Councillor Seven.
Thank you. I actually, I don't support the motion as it is. I just feel I'm a little troubled by. I feel like we're we're sort of pricing people and families out of of a market. I understand rates are going up sort of all over. But I feel like we shouldn't be sort of. Going along with with what the market is, even even if it comes at a little bit of an expense for us. The report notes that there will be an anticipated increase uptake for those accessing rent support programs. And I'd be happy to be corrected if I'm wrong, but I assume that is because of the the significant increase in in the prices proposed. I guess we often talk about affordable housing and the need for it and I just feel like we have an opportunity here to to keep. More affordable and so I just don't support it for those reasons.
Alex, did you want to respond to that or?
Yes, thank you councillor Seven through the chair. When when we're speaking of Britannia. The original rents were set at eighty percent of our. Approved average or alternate average market rent. So that's that's where the affordability piece came in with it setting eight percent of that rate. What we're proposing is a one point two percent rental increase. So it's.
Alex, we're still talking about the first one for Britannia Street.
Okay.
That's my point to you're talking about.
Thank you councillor Henderson. It's actually Jeff, but. So what what's, how can I help? What's the question councillor Seven?
It's also, I guess, if you wanted to speak more about. In the report, it notes that there'll be an anticipated increase uptake for those accessing rent support programs.
Through the chair, I can speak. We we have seen through through COVID, some some economic downturn. So yes, there has been an uptake for that. The however, the the current approved market rent, average market rent. We started, we've done this for the last few years. We we recognize that CMHC rates are not reflective of the local economy. And therefore we put in to have a change reviewed every year and that's, we continue to do that this year. So that that is why we. It does, it does show a difference of what the typical average market rate is. It does show an increase. But it's more reflective of our current, the the local population.
Thank you.
Councillor McAlachus?
And if I may, and and I could be wrong, but I just want for clarification, one of the reasons for going to a more realistic average market rent. Is then it actually does open up the possibility for rent supplements for more families. So by actually using suppressed values for our average market rent. There will be a lot of families that then don't qualify for the rent supplement. So while it looks like what we're doing is increasing. Rents, what we're actually saying to the province is there are families that need our help because our. Our average market rents are significantly higher than what CMHC is doing and that has a lot to do with. Being a smaller community, having a lot of secondary rental markets. So it's a little complicated. But I think what councillor Seven's, I think what he's getting at is by doing what we're doing, we're actually increasing the number of families so we can help. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct with deeper subslice patient and in in the the rent subsidies.
Councillor Seven?
Right, and thank you. I appreciate the more information. I just, I guess, I guess my concern lies also with. The families who aren't eligible particularly for rent subsidies and so they're sort of being. You know, I guess, I guess they're sort of stuck between not being able to to afford and also not being eligible. I mean, the rent prices are going up. And all you hear are people that are that are glad that they were in the market either for a house or for rental years ago. And I just feel like we're. You know, I I feel like. I I I understand what you're saying. I just feel like we're feeding into sort of the the overall. Lack of affordability in the rental market by by also raising ours and and everyone who raises theirs, everyone else sort of sees that. And it just keeps sort of snowballing and and so that's. It is complicated, but ultimately I I don't support the proposed increase.
Same, but they also have any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Want to pose? Thank you. So move on to five point. Two, and the motion is that the report Britannia two thousand and twenty-two rent increase and annual rent increases be received for information. The city council approve a one point two percent rent increase guideline for the Britannia Street Housing Project effective January first, two thousand and twenty-two. And that city council amend delegation of authority by law one three five dash two oh one seven. As amended to delegate authority to the director of social services to implement the Ontario annual rent increase guideline at Britannia Street Housing Project going forward. And I will point out that last year there was no renting. Because the government put a freeze on it. Do we have a mover for that motion? Councillor Clifford? And councillor Bunty is seconding. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. Six point one, two thousand and twenty-one homeless enumeration. Subcommittee recommendation that report titled two thousand and twenty-one homeless enumeration be received for information and. Kim, would you like to speak on that?
Thank you through the chair. This is more to to acknowledge that we will be taking. A designated pick count on October thirtieth. Recognizing the homelessness group enumeration, but we will take the the statistical and. The statistical count from November first to tenth to coincide with the by-name list monthly update process. The extended timeframe falls within our ministry guideline and it it will give us. Assurance that we are reaching out to those that are provisionally housed or homeless at the time and help form our by-name list.
Thank you. And for those at home that maybe aren't following along on the report. Just know that the Canadian Mental Health Association, her and her choices for change alcohol, drug and gambling counseling center. Choices for Change Alcohol, Drug and Gambling Counseling Centre, Family Murphy Centre, the John Howard Society of London District. Ontario Works, Optimism Place Women Shelter and Support Services. The Salvation Army Housing Resource Centre, Social Services Outreach Program. The Stratford Pursh Shelter Link. And so a supportive housing of Perth program. Are, are some of the organizations and programs that will be included in them. Getting this report done. If I have a mover for the motion, Counselor Seven. Counselor Vakalasis seconding it, any questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, and I meant to also thank staff for all their work on this. I mean, we started this, what, four years ago now? And we started before the province even mandated it, good work. Oops, gotta get back to my agenda here. 6.2 is update on the Ontario Works caseload and caseload forecast for 2023. So the report titled update on the Ontario Works caseload and caseload forecast for 2022, 2023 be received for information. Counselor Verback is moving that. And the seconder is Counselor Ritzma, any questions or comments? Um, Kim, did you want to do any updates on this?
Through your worship, this is a, a report that we generally put into subcommittee annually. Just note this year that the ministry is forecasting an increase. We saw a dip in caseloads. For, for currently, but we do forecast an increase to social assistance caseloads pending the SCRB. Financial support ending, so. We have just outlined that in this report as to what the ministry is forecasting.
Well, I guess we can always hope that it's wrong. Unfortunately, thank heavens, we have a great teamwork in there. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, thank you. Move for German. Counselor Vakalasis and Counselor Verback, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Counselor Ritzma? Thank you, your worship. I'd like to call the Planning and Heritage Committee meeting to order. Item number two, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Item three, delegations, none scheduled. Item four, a report of the manager of planning. Item 4.1 is the planning report, official plan amendment application, OPA. 01-20 and zone change amendment Z06-20. Which pertains to the properties of 370 to 396 Ontario Street. And Ms. Bridge is going to make a presentation. Staff presentation, I'll turn it over to you, manager of planning.
Thank you, through the chair, good afternoon. I'm just confirming that everyone can see the slide deck on their screen in front of them.
Yes, it's there, thank you.
Excellent, great, so as the chair mentioned, you have before you this afternoon. An official plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment for the properties located at 370 to 396 Ontario Street. An application have been submitted for an official plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment. To permit a 34-unit, four-story, multiple residential building. The applications request that the site be re-designated from residential area to high-density residential. And that the properties be rezoned from mixed-use residential and neighborhood commercial to a site-specific residential fifth density zone. I wanted to provide a little bit of an overview of the application timeline to date. So the applications were deemed complete in November of 2020. The statutory public meeting was held in January of 2021. Given the, the public interest in response to the notice of application in the public meeting. A neighborhood meeting with the developer, city staff and neighborhood residents was held in April of this year. Following that meeting in April, in June of this year, the applicant resubmitted the application with a revised concept plan and a revised planning justification report. Given the level of public interest in the application. This revised concept plan and planning justification report were posted on the city's website. And shared with residents who had been participating through email. At that time, staff also advised that it was likely that this application would return to the Planning and Heritage Committee meeting in September. It's also probably worthwhile to note that the September Planning and Heritage Meeting was chosen. After dialogue with the developer. In order to provide sufficient time for staff to review the resubmitted application. And given the neighborhood interest to also avoid bringing the application forward in the summer months. So the subject lands are municipally addressed as 370, 388, 390 and 396 Ontario Street. And they're located on the north side of Ontario Street between Trow Avenue and Queen Street. And they have a total area of approximately 0.44 hectares. And the sites are currently comprised of two vacant lots, three single detached dwellings and a vacant commercial building. As mentioned, in June of this year, the developer submitted a revised concept plan for the subject properties. That revised concept plan is on the screen in front of you. So the proposed development continues to be a four-story multi-residential building. The building incorporates a level of structured parking at the ground floor, three levels of residential. And then you'll see on the elevation slides which follow, they also incorporate a pitched roof into the design of the building. Some of the revisions made to the concept plan was to replace the two-story portion of the building that fronted Trow Avenue with outdoor amenity space. And a two-story element was also added along the Queen Street frontage to provide a transition from the density and height to the adjacent single detached residential neighborhoods. The rear of the site was reconfigured to allow for additional landscaping and buffering along the northerly lot line. There was a reduction in the total number of units proposed from 36 units to 34 units. And as a result, the density for the site was decreased from 96.3 units per hectare to 97 or 90.7 units per hectare. Parking was also reduced as part of the reduction in overall units. And a parking rate of 1.67 spaces per residential unit is proposed. The revised concept plan also in, included an increase to the amount of landscaped open space and a reduction to the proposed lot coverage. As you can see now, here are some conceptual elevations that have been submitted with the revised concept plan. As mentioned, there is a two-story element of the building both along Queen Street and along Trow Avenue. And the developer has incorporated pitched roof lines along the Ontario Street frontage. The subject lands are currently designated residential area in the city's official plan. This designation permits a variety of low and medium dense, density residential uses. In the residential area, the official plan specifies a maximum density of 65 units per hectare. The OP also has height limitations for development within the residential area. This area would qualify as a stable residential area, so the OP would cap the maximum height at three stories. The subject lands are also designated mixed-use special policy area two. And the official plan encourages a mix of residential, commercial and institutional uses within this special policy area. The subject lands are also within a heritage area and heritage corridor as identified on schedule E to the official plan. And the official plan requires that where infilling is proposed within these areas. The inherited heritage qualities of the area or corridor be retained, restored or ideally enhanced. Lastly, the lands are located within the city's built boundary as identified on schedule A of the official plan. The official plan amendment that's been submitted has requested to re-designate the subject properties to high-density residential. This would mean that the properties could have a maximum density of 100 units per hectare and a maximum building height of six stories. I'll go through briefly at a high level some of the applicable official plan policies to this official plan amendment application. So the first is the intensification target. So the city's official plan contains an intensification target. And this target aims to have 25% of all residential growth. In the city between 2013 and 2033 occur within the built boundary. As mentioned previously, the subject lands are located within the built boundary. And the proposed development would contribute to the achievement of that intensification target. And the city's official plan also contains a housing mix target. And that target is 53% low density, 17% medium density and 30% high density. The proposed development would create 34 apartment units and is considered high-density. And as a result, it would contribute to the achievement of the official plan target of having 30% of all dwelling units in the city in 2033 as high-density. As mentioned previously, the subject lands are located within the heritage area and heritage corridor. The heritage area and heritage corridors encompass a large area of the city. And includes the downtown core as well as areas zoned for mixed-use residential, commercial and institutional purposes. Existing development within the heritage area and along the heritage corridor is not necessarily homogeneous in character. And there are a variety of building types, heights, materials and land uses within these areas. The subject application would provide for a development with setbacks along Ontario Street that are similar in nature to the surrounding street, street state. The proposed building design includes a pitched roof, windows, building materials and a building articulation. That have similar qualities to the buildings within the heritage area and the heritage corridor. In an effort to overall maintain the heritage qualities of the area. The high-density residential area policies of the official plan are also applicable to this application. So I think it's important to note that the official plan doesn't pre-designate lands for high-density residential development. But it does contemplate this type of development in the city. So to do so, the official plan contains a policy framework. To guide the establishment of new high-density residential areas. And this framework includes a set of criteria that need to be used to evaluate high-density residential proposals. And it specifically requires an official plan amendment to implement the designation. So the subject applications fulfill the OP criteria for high-density residential areas. Through providing a development that widens the range of development forms and densities through a four-story, 34-unit apartment building. That is primarily street-oriented in design. Access to the proposed development is off of Queen Street, which has a direct connection to Ontario Street and Arturo Road. This will minimize traffic impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. The subject site is also located within 400 meters of a number of parks and recreational opportunities. And is located in proximity to the downtown core and commercial uses along Ontario Street. One of the criteria for new high-density residential areas. Is that the proposed development be designed to ensure that there are no significant negative impacts. With respect to privacy, shadowing and that appropriate buffering can be provided for any adjacent residential uses. I think it's important to note that the official plan policy requires no significant negative impacts. Meaning that it is. Anticipated that development that is high-density residential in nature will have some impact with respect to shadowing and privacy on adjacent residents. A shadow study was submitted with the application. Demonstrating that shadow impacts are largely limited to the winter months and that there are little. Shadow impacts to the neighboring properties in the spring, summer and fall months. Specifically to address buffering and privacy. The proposed building, with the exception of the two-story element closest to Trow Avenue. Is cited on average 15 to 21 meters from the property line shared with the residential properties to the north. Landscape buffering is proposed between the. Parking area and that northerly property boundary. And in addition, as previously mentioned. The building has been designed with two-story elements at Queen Street and Trow Avenue. To transition the height of the proposed development to the existing adjacent low residential neighborhoods. So this combination of setback, transition and landscaping all work together to ensure that there are no significant negative impacts with respect to privacy. Further, there are existing municipal services that have capacity to accommodate the proposed development. And the subject lands are not located adjacent to any properties that are designated under part four or part five of the Heritage Act. Lastly, chapter six of the official plan sets out the community design strategy for the city. And the subject applications conform with that community design strategy through the provision of a mix of housing types. Through the sighting of the parking areas to the rear of the property and by situating the building mass adjacent to Ontario Street. Today, the subject properties are currently zoned mixed-use residential and neighborhood commercial. In these zones, a maximum building height of 10 meters is permitted. A maximum lot coverage of 40% and a rear yard depth of six meters is permitted. And the applicant has requested to rezone the subject properties to an R52 zone with site-specific regulations. And I'll go through at a high level what these site-specific regulations are. The first is with respect to building height. So the amendment has requested to establish a maximum building height of 17.5 meters. The height requested will accommodate at grade parking on the first story of the building and a pitched roof. The recommended zoning bylaw amendment that was attached to the staff report. Contains provisions to limit that building height to 17.5 meters and four stories. The amendment has also requested a reduced corner lot frontage. So the frontage of this site is along Trow Avenue due to the configuration of the site. And this site-specific regulation has been. Requested to recognize the existing condition of the subject lands once a road widening in daylight and triangle have been conveyed through a future site plan application. The amendment has also requested a reduced exterior side yard setback of 3.0 meters. So this is along the Ontario Street frontage of the property. The zoning bylaw, the R52 zone would typically require a 7.5 meter setback. A five-point, a five-meter road widening is required along Ontario Street as part of a future site plan application. So until Ontario Street. Is widened in the future, the functional setback of the building will actually be eight meters from the street line. Existing setbacks along Ontario Street between Front Street and Parkview Drive were analyzed through the applicant's planning justification report. And it was demonstrated that existing setbacks along this stretch of Ontario Street vary. And many of the buildings. That are existing have setbacks that align with the setback requested. The applicant has also requested a reduced interior side yard setback, so this would be the side yard that. The lot line that's shared with the residential properties to the north of the subject properties. A setback of 1.5 meters has been requested. Traditionally, the R52 zone will require an interior side yard setback of half the building height or five meters, whichever is greater. The interior side yard setback reduction is required for the most westerly portion of the property where the lot narrows. And the two-story element of the building is proposed. For the balance of the subject lands, the proposed set, the proposed building is setback at least 15 meters from the northerly property line. The recommended zoning bylaw amendment is structured such that that reduced side yard setback. Is only applicable to that most westerly portion of the property. And the requirements of the R52 zone would, with respect to side yard setbacks would apply to the rest of the property. And the last site-specific regulation is with, with respect to the front yard depth. So to reduce the impact of that proposed interior side yard setback. The recommended zoning bylaw amendment contains a front yard depth of 21 meters. Meaning that the building cannot be built within the first 21 meters of depth from Trow Avenue. So this in combination with the interior side yard setback provisions. Limit the portion of the building that can be within 1.5 meters of that northerly lot line. The application is also requested to amend the accessible parking space dimensions to reflect the dimensions of the accessibility for Ontarians. With Disabilities Act Type A and Type B space dimensions. The recommended zoning bylaw amendment. Incorporates the type B width of 2.8 meters that's in the current draft comprehensive zoning bylaw. So notice of this application was sent to 159 surrounding property owners on December 8th, 2020. Notice was also published in the Beacon Herald on December 12th. Notice was also published in the Beacon Herald on December twelfth of twenty twenty and a statutory public meeting was held on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. At the time of writing the staff report, city staff had received comments from approximately thirty area residents, including emails, letters and phone calls in opposition to the proposed development. Uh, comments have been summarized thematically in the report and I'll provide a high-level overview of some of the most common comments received in the staff responses. Um, I'll start with the concern over maintaining the official plan and precedent. The official plan is a living document and changes are sometimes warranted to it. The official plan amendment process is set out in the Planning Act and it allows property owners to change the policies or designations that apply to their property through a public process. Um, the city's official plan does contemplate high-density residential development and, as mentioned previously, sets out a policy framework for the establishment of new high-density residential areas uh, which this um, which these applications were required to comply with. Um, any future applications for high-density residential development will be evaluated against the criteria in the official plan, and that's based on the proposal and the site context. Um, it's also notable that there are existing multi-story residential buildings within the city that are four stories in height or more. Um, some of these include that are uh, four fifty-six Lauren Avenue, which is a four-story building. Uh, two thirty-five and two fifty-five John Street North, which are two four-story buildings located within the heritage area. Uh, four four-story buildings located on Oxford Street and a four-story building located on Front Street, which is also within the heritage area. Um, staff have also received a number of comments on the physical separation of the proposed building to existing residential uses. Um, so as mentioned, with the exception of that two-story element at the most westerly uh, portion of the property, um, the balance of the building is setback fifteen to twenty-one meters from the northerly properly lot, property line, six meters from Queen Street and twenty-one meters from Trow Avenue. Um, as mentioned, the recommended zoning bylaw amendment has been structured um, to limit the one point five meter setback from that northerly lot line uh, to the most westerly portion of the property. Um, staff have also received a number of concerns about the height of the building. Um, so as mentioned, the proposed height of the building uh, reflects the conceptual building design that includes one level of structured parking at grade, three levels of residential and a pitched roof that's been um proposed to maintain the heritage characters and quality of the area. The zoning bylaw amendment also contains regulations to limit that height of the building to seventeen point five meters and four stories. Um, we've also received comments regarding traffic and queuing. Um, city engineering staff have reviewed the proposed development and have determined that there are no concerns with respect to the volumes of traffic generated, the location of the proposed access um, and queuing. Um, as the size of the proposed development will not generate traffic levels that will impact the size or frequency of queuing that currently occurs at the intersection of Queen and Ontario Street. Um, staff have also received a number of concerns related to heritage. Um, so it's staff's opinion that the building design meets the objectives of the official plan with respect to the sighting of the buildings along the Ontario Street property line and the sighting of parking to the rear of the building. Um, in addition, as mentioned, the design incorporates a pitched roof, articulation and building materials to reflect the heritage qualities of the surrounding neighborhood. Um, the subject properties do not contain and aren't adjacent to any properties designated under part four or part five of the Heritage Act. And the properties do not contain any um and the properties are, the subject properties are not identified on the city's non-designated heritage registry. Uh, staff recommend approval of official plan amendment oh one dash twenty and zone change application zero six dash twenty. As the request is consistent with the provincial's policy statement, it's in conformity with the official plan. Um, and the public was consulted during the application circulation and comments have been received, considered and analyzed within the planning report. Uh, that is all I have for you formally today, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge, for your fulsome presentation. I appreciate it. Council's uh, questions, Counsel Henderson.
I have a couple um, to start with and then I'll let other people speak. Is there any um has, have they talked about what's going to happen with that mature tree at the corner of Troy in Ontario? And also I was wondering, in the picture, does it show any trees being planted? Will there be enough room and are there plans to plant trees along Ontario Street there in front of the building?
Through the chair, so tree removal is typically um, part of the site, future site plan application that would come on the property. So they'll be required to do a tree preservation plan and inventory that's reviewed by staff and will have recommendations about uh, retaining trees and any trees that are be to removed. As well through that site plan application, they are required to do a landscape plan and that landscape plan would incorporate shrubs and trees and those types of features.
Well, follow-up to that is, that doesn't come back to council, that part, right? So how do we have any control over that?
Uh, through the chair, that's correct. Site plan approval is currently uh, delegated to staff. Um, and the tree preservation plan is reviewed in accordance with official plan policies and the private tree removal bylaw.
Thank you. Counsel Seven, I have you next.
Thank you. I just had a, some questions about the, the shadow study that you were talking about. And in the report, it just mentions um that it would mostly be affected in the winter months, and I'm just wondering if you have more information on that. And I also saw that it it notes that it would be similar to what is allowed in the current zoning. Um, but I'm just, unless I'm not understanding, there's a currently would be a ten-meter height restriction. And then if the zone change was approved, it'd be seventeen meters. I'm just wondering if you could elaborate on the shadow study a little bit in that regard?
Sure. So through the chair, so there's a couple of things that get looked at um, together when you're doing a shadow study. So one is the height of the building and the second is the setback of the building to the property line. So based on the existing zoning today, the building could be ten meters in height, but could be as close as six meters to that northerly property line. Um, whereas the proposed building, with the exception of that uh, one point five meter setback where the two-story element is is setback on average fifteen to twenty-one meters from the property line. Uh, with respect to the details of the shadow studies, so how it's undertaken is they look at um, shadowing at the um summer solstice, the winter solstice, the spring equinox and the fall equinox, and they look at it both in the morning and the afternoon. My understanding is that generally speaking, shadows are more accepted when they are um, on commercial properties and not impacting private amenity areas and more acceptable when they're impacting uh, private amenity areas in the winter when residents are less likely to use those spaces. Um, so the shadow study completed uh, does not show or has very limited shadow impacts in the spring, summer and fall months, but does have shadow impacts in the winter months.
Counsel Seven, follow-up?
Follow-up to you, do you have, does it give the information, is that mean like in the winter months, I'm just, does that mean there? Sorry, does that mean that there would be complete shadows in the, in the, like, would it be the, the sun would be completely gone in the winter months? Or does it have that kind of detailed information or is it?
It does have that type, or through the chair, it does have that type of detailed information. So it's a, a modeling that's used that shows the length and the sha- impacted shadows throughout various periods in the day.
Counsel Clifford?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I, I'd like to ask our staff, if it, if it was a three-story apartment or condo, would there have to be an official plan changed to have a three-story?
Through the chair, so it is that change to that fourth story that triggers the requirement for an official plan amendment. Um, this would be considered a stable residential neighborhood. And under the stable residential neighborhood policies of the official plan, they'd be allowed to have a height of three stories today.
Any further questions? Counsel Vassalakos, I see your hand, and then Counsel Ingram and Burbak.
So I had a question about that rear yard. So um, under the current regulations, they could have three stories and they could be six and a half meters from that rear lot line. Is that correct? And um, I don't see anywhere in the, the site-specific regulations, like you're saying that right now that it's you know, on average fifteen to twenty-one meters. But have we got any assurance that it will be that built into the new zoning? Um, because it occurs to me that if, if you're three stories and six and a half meters, it may look like four stories and fifteen to twenty-one meters, but how do you, how are, how do you lock in that fifteen to twenty-one meters so that you don't then have it moving closer to that lot on?
Through the chair, so um the existing zoning would allow a ten-meter um, high building set six meters back from the property line. Uh, the way that the recommended zoning bylaw has been structured is that the um, regulations with respect to an interior side yard setback of the parent R-five zone would apply, which is uh, five meters or half the height of the building, whichever is greater. Um, so we'd be looking at um, in and around nine meter setback that's regulated by the zoning. Based on the site configuration and the parking requirements, it is likely that it wouldn't shrink at all because they do need to provide the parking somewhere on the site. If, if that helps provide any, any reassurance.
Would there, sorry, yes, follow-up, sorry, excuse me. Would, would we be able to actually um, just build into it? If, if they're not likely to be able to, would the builder be immuneable to saying that um, that rear fifteen to twenty-one will stay? That, that it will be what comes back on in site plan?
Through the chair, so to confirm, um, Counsel Vassalakos, are you asking for a site specific in the zoning bylaw that stipulates the minimum interior side yard setback for the balance of the property?
I think so, yes. Just to, just to maintain what they've presented here.
Uh, through the chair, so that's certainly something that staff could be supportive of. Because the lot boundary is irregular, we would need to measure that probably from the smallest extent, which would be fifteen meters.
Anything further, Counsel Vassalakos?
Uh, other than um, just if, if I could uh, I guess we don't have a motion on the floor, but when we get to it, I can make that amendment to fifteen, could I not at that point? Just for clarity.
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Counsel Ingram and then Counsel Burbak.
Thank you. So I have three questions. Um, the parking rate of one point six seven spaces per unit, how does that translate into required residential spaces versus visitor spaces?
I've through the chairs, so when they would come in for a future site plan application, uh, we would apply a rate of zero point two five spaces to that overall rate to get the visitor parking rate, so um, approximately a quarter of the spaces would need to be visitor parking.
Thank you. And is there any loading spaces included for the building?
Uh, through the chair, not shown on the current concept plan.
Okay. Um, and then in terms of the traffic generation and backup of vehicles on Queen Street, if this is determined to be a problem in the future, then the city would be responsible for rectifying um, and installing any traffic measures. Is that correct?
Through the chair, and I'll answer that one. Uh, that would be correct. Uh, however, I would just like to note that um a threshold that would trigger the warrants to look at uh, signalized intersections or alternate traffic measures would likely be impacted by the festival theater and ongoing special events that would likely more contribute to those warrants.
Perfect, thank you. And my last question um is, this is, this property fronts onto an inter- Ontario road um, close to downtown on a transit route. So if a four-story residential building was not appropriate in this location, where in the city would it be locate, appropriate?
Uh, through the chair, so as noted before, the city's official plan doesn't pre-designate lands for high-density residential development. Um, my understanding is that it's done this way specifically so that those types of factors men- mentioned by Counselor Ingram can be considered um, as a future application for high-density residential development is um, evaluated. Um, the other side note to that would be, I mentioned that uh, this, the official plan has uh, different maximum heights depending on where in the city you are located. So for a stable residential area, that's three stories. For new residential areas, that's four stories.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counsel Ingram. Counsel Burbak.
Thank you. I also had three uh, questions or comments. Uh, it's sort of following on Counselor Ingram's comment uh, about the official plan. Uh, and also about the urban design guidelines that we asked for uh, in the other, uh, earlier in this meeting. Uh, it would be great to have some more guidelines as to um, where we want high density. Uh, what are the design guidelines? How can we ensure that there are heritage qualities reflected uh, in heritage areas and corridors? Um, a little more guidance for council would really be appreciated if we can develop those policies. I guess that's more of a comment. Um, I had a question about the at-grade parking, so it's going to be underneath the building, basically taking up one story. So wouldn't it make more sense to have that underground and then have a three-story building on top of that? Or does that still count if, if that parking is underground, would that be then a four-story building still?
Uh, through the chair, so the height is measured from grade to the highest point of the building. So if parking was moved to be one-story underground, that wouldn't count towards the overall height of the building.
So in theory, they could do the same design, but they could take the parking and move it lower and thus the building would then be shorter and that might make a lot of people happier. So just, just a thought. Um, my last question actually was about uh, traffic again. Um, we talk a lot about the cars coming out. Um, I would anticipate there would be an increase in pedestrian traffic. There would be a lot more residents living there. There already is, I think, some issues with pedestrians getting across Ontario Street in those locations. It's quite far to the next um, traffic light for pedestrians to walk and then walk back. So I'm wondering if we're going to do some sort of traffic stu- or pedestrian traffic study. Uh, active transportation possibly, it may warrant some kind of crosswalk at that spot. And I'm just wondering if we've considered that.
Yeah, through the chair, I can uh, speak to that one as well. Um, at this point, um, there is no uh, identified crossing point for this arterial road. However, we would be hesitant about installing um, such a measure unless there was a connecting link that would uh, uh, promote such a implementation. The front street uh, signalized lights is not too far down the road. So at this point, uh, additional trash, pedestrian measures would not be looked into.
Okay, I was specifically thinking about Queen rather than Trow, but um, just to clarify, but I, yeah. I would like to see us considering that possibly in the future if this development moves forward.
Thank you, Counsel Burbak. Any further questions from counsel? Counsel Bunting?
Through you, uh, Mr. Chair. With regards to the sidewalk that's shown on the sketches, um, it shows it to be right up to the curb, which is quite typically what it is in Ontario Street anyways. I, I just wondered with the big setback at the moment, would there be any opportunity to at least move that sidewalk back and create some sort of a boulevard there? Um, and for safety of pedestrians. I realize that it isn't that way all the way, but it's just a thought, uh, when I saw the sketch. The other thing I, I would have to ask is um the dormer-style windows that face Ontario Street. I, I take it from your presentation that there are no dormer-style windows facing north uh, proposed.
Ms. Bridge?
Uh, through the chair, so my understanding is that the north side of the building uh, won't have balconies or as large of windows to try to help um, minimize any privacy or overlook impacts on the northerly residents. Um, and perhaps the Director of Infrastructure could weigh in on the location of the sidewalk.
Mr. Crinklaw?
Yes, through the chair. Um, but it's a good point that was raised there and that could be something that we discuss at the site plan stage.
Anything further, Mr. Bunting? Counsel Bunting?
I know, I just didn't know if uh, if there was any indication with regards to the, the north, the north-facing um dormer-type windows or, it, it, it's a section that comes out. It's not continuous to write the whole length, but, by the sketch, but I realized. It's not continuous to write the whole length by the sketch, but I realize things can change from a sketch to when it comes to the actual drawing itself. I just, I just needed to know the answer to that, and you may not have that answer.
Through the chair, so we haven't been provided with building elevations of that north side of the building. I do understand that the agent for the applicant is on the line and planning to address council, so she may have more information she can share about the design of that building elevation.
Thank you. Anything further from council? With regards to the manager planner, planning report. Okay, seeing none once again. Thank you, Ms. Bridge. So we're going to move forward to the public piece of the presentation. And there is a motion that delegations from the following persons regarding official plan amendment O P A zero one dash two zero and zone change application Z zero six dash two zero be heard. And they are as follows, Emily Elliott from H M H B C representing the applicant. Gary Anandale from Queen Trow Development. James Battle, Festival Area Repairers Association, Nancy Smith, Turkstrom Mesa Associates, Robert Ritz. We did have the earlier today, a removal of Tom Hamza for a presentation. Next would be Mark Marcus Laterno from Managing Principal of LHC Heritage Planning and Archaeologically. And one addition as per the amendment is Mike Sullivan. So if I could entertain a motion for that. And that's moved by Counselor Ingram, second by Counselor Gaffey. All in favor? And that's unanimous. So I'm looking to the clerk, is Emily, Ms. Elliott available? And just a reminder, as she's coming on the line to all our presenters, that we are allotting ten minutes per presentation. I will give you a reminder at the nine-minute mark, and I apologize in advance for that. I'll give you a reminder to wrap up at the nine-minute mark. So please adhere to that because we do have significant number of of presentations. So if Ms. Elliott is there, then I will give the floor to you.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Mayor Matheson and members of the committee. My name is Emily Elliott, and I'm a planner with M H B C Planning, and I'm here today on behalf of the owner, Chance Re Development Limited. And I'd like to start off by thanking Ms. Bridge for her thorough presentation. We've reviewed the staff report and support the recommendations. Next slide, please. So as Ms. Bridge mentioned, the sites on the north side of Ontario Street between Queen and Trow and is proximate to a range of uses, including retail and commercial uses along Ontario Street and downtown Stratford to the west. The Stratford Festival and recreational uses are located to the north. Ontario Street is an arterial road, and it has two existing bus routes, including a stop at the corner of Ontario Street and Queen Street. Next slide, please. Official plan amendment and zoning by law amendments were first submitted for these lands in October of two thousand and twenty. The initial proposal was for a four-story building with thirty-six units. And the building also featured a two-story element at the corner of Ontario and Trow, which had indoor amenity area on the ground floor and units on the second story. You can see that on the screen here. Next slide, please. Following the public meeting, the design was revised. And you can see here that the two-story element at the corner of Queen and Trow was removed and replaced with an outdoor amenity area. As a result, the building setback to Trow was increased to twenty-four meters. The redesign also had the effect of reducing the number of units by two to thirty-four units. And the rear of the site was redesigned to allow for additional landscaping and buffering opportunities. The revised building design includes two-story elements at the flankages of the building oriented towards the adjacent streets. And the building design has taken into consideration the future widening of Ontario Street, including the dedication of a five-meter strip of land along Ontario Street and daylighting triangles at each of the intersections. Next slide, please. This slide highlights some of the key statistical changes that occurred between the two, the initial proposal and the redesign. I'll go through them fairly quickly as Ms. Bridge covered them fairly thoroughly in her presentation. So the density of the proposed development was reduced by five point six units per hectare as a result of those two units that were removed. The front yard setback, that's Trow Avenue, was increased by twenty-one meters. The side yard width was also slightly increased. But again, that reduced side yard only applies to the westerlymost part of the building. The maximum lot coverage was increased by one hundred and forty-five square meters, which was six point seven percent. The minimum landscape open space was increased by three hundred and twenty square meters or eight point six percent. And the parking was reduced by four spaces. So there's a total parking rate of one point six spaces per unit, which exceeds the bylaw requirements. Next slide, please. The next few slides will illustrate the development vision and design influences that contributed to this project. So the developments of multiple residential buildings will contribute to the range of dwelling types in the area. It's oriented towards Ontario Street and has been designed to enhance the street's gate through high-quality materials and a detailed facade design. Parkings located as structured spaces on the ground floor and surface parking spaces to the rear in order to minimize the visual impact on Ontario Street. Ontario Street's an arterial road, and the design will create a strong presence and contribute to the overall character of the street, proximate to downtown. And the design incorporates opportunities for landscaping and buffering to the existing homes that front on Coburg. Vehicular access is proposed to be provided from Queen Street, approximately at the same location as one of the existing driveways. And municipal watering and sanitary services are also available. On this slide, you can also see the setback of the rear of the building to the northerly lot line. So the setback, as Elizabeth or Ms. Bridge mentioned, is between fifteen and twenty-one meters and varies as a result of the irregular lot shape. The reduced interior side yard that was mentioned applies only to the westerlymost portion of the building where the lot narrows significantly. Next slide, please. This slide shows conceptual renderings of the buildings, and therefore illustrated purposes only. Detailed elevations will be prepared as part of the future site plan process. The development transitions from four to two stories at the Trow Avenue and Queen Street frontages. These elements are oriented to adjacent streets to enhance all street gates, and they also function as a transition to the adjacent single detached dwellings to the north. The development has been designed to animate and create a positive interface with each of the adjacent streets. The building design uses recesses, projections, and varying roof lines and a variety of materials to break up the mashing of the building. Amenity area has been provided at the corner of Ontario and Trow and serves as a future, a further transition to the adjacent residential uses and creates a focal point for that intersection. Next slide, please. This slide includes a cross-section that might help answer some of the questions about the rear elevation of the building. And it also shows the organization of the site, including the location of the building in relationship to the existing homes. And this is taken at approximately two sixty-five Coburg through the property. So I'd just like to highlight a couple of things. At the number one, you can see the maximum height of the building, and that's how it's measured to the top of the pitched roof. At number two, you can see the maximum ceiling height, and this confirms that there will be no loft-style units above the fourth-floor ceiling and no windows above the ceiling of the fourth story looking into the rear yards of those existing homes. The cross-section also illustrates at number three that there will be no balconies proposed on the rear of the building. Number four shows the distance that the building will be setback from the northerly lot line. And as has been mentioned, it varies based on the irregular lot shape, but will be between sixteen, fifteen and twenty-one meters. And the current rear yard setback in the zoning by law is six meters here. Number five shows the setback of the building to Ontario Street. So the site-specific by law has requested a reduced setback of three meters to Ontario Street. However, a five-meter strip of land across the front of the property will be dedicated to the city through the site plan approval process for the future widening of Ontario Street. So the functional building setback will be eight meters from Ontario Street, and the next slide will show that in a little bit more detail. Finally, the gray shape shown on this slide is a, shows the building that could be constructed as a right based on the current permissions in the zoning by law. So the as a right building has a maximum height of ten meters and a setback to the property line to the homes on Coburg of six meters. So that's kind of shown in relationship to the proposed building in the gray box there. Next slide, please. As I mentioned on the previous slide, this slide speaks to the setback of the building in relationship to Ontario Street. So the extent of the five-meter land dedication on Ontario Street is shown in the blue line. And the requested three-meter setback, which is measured from the limit of the road widening, is shown in the red line. So as you can see here, a number of buildings, the majority of buildings on this stretch of Ontario Street have setbacks similar to that is being proposed for the the proposed development. So until Ontario Street is widened, the functional setback will be eight meters. Next slide, please. This slide highlights some of the heritage influences that contributed to the design. So the form of the building has a roof that is pitched with gabled features. The rhythm of the gables reflects the roof line of the existing single detached dwellings along Ontario Street. The building design has articulated corners to address the intersections and sidewalks. The building addresses Ontario Street through the provision of bay windows and street-facing balconies with smaller windows on the first story and larger windows above. It activates the street gate through a building entrance and windows overlooking the street and the amenity area at the corner. Building materials are intended to be reflective of the neighborhood character, including brick and stone treatment with wrought iron fences and gates. And building materials will be finalized through the future site plan stage. The building has been designed with projections and articulations of masonry along Ontario Street in order to break up the massing. And then the lower image on your screen shows some of the architectural elements of downtown Stratford that have been considered in the design of the building. At present, as Ms. Bridge mentioned, the site contains a vacant lot, vacant commercial building, and three single detached dwellings. None of the existing properties are designated by the Ontario Heritage Act or listed on the city's municipal heritage register. And Ontario Street itself is characterized by a broad range of uses and building types, including commercial, residential, thank you, and institutional uses. Next slide. This slide highlights proposed applications which were described in detail in Ms. Bridge's presentation. So to reiterate, there are site-specific regulations to include a maximum building height of seventeen point five meters and four stories and an increased front yard setback proposed to ensure the westerly corner of the site is developed with an outdoor amenity area and to minimize the impact of the building on the adjacent homes. Next slide, please. With regard to conformity to the official plan, the proposed development promotes intensification to meet the city's intensification target and contribute to the city's housing mix target. It addresses the criteria for new high-density residential areas set out in the official plan, including contributing to the mix of housing types and range of densities. It's oriented towards the street located on an arterial road with existing transit. And it's designed with opportunities for buffering and setback to adjacent lands and municipal services are available. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, the proposed development has been revised in response to comments received at the public meeting and was presented at the neighborhood meeting, and a resubmission was filed in June. It's consistent with the P P S and represents an opportunity for intensification within the belt boundary in the mixed-use area on an underutilized site proximate to a range of uses and located on an arterial road which features existing transit. It addresses the city's policies for new high-density residential areas and assists the city in achieving its intensification target and housing mix target. The development incorporates compatibility considerations and will enhance the Ontario Street's street gate close to downtown. Thank you very much for your consideration, and I would be pleased to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Questions from council? Miss, Councilor Ingram?
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. I'm wondering, you know, recognizing that the design is subject to site plan. I'm wondering if you could just give some sort of some sort of confirmation that the intent of the applicant is to construct the building in substantial conformity with the elevation drawings that you've shown on your presentation.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that is the intention of the the owner of the site.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ingram. Any further questions from council? Mayor Matheson.
My question's actually for Ms. Bridge. The first one is the lot at the corner of Ontario and Trow, which has been left and shows now for outdoor amenity. Is there any way to ensure that that lot in the future can't now in the future be used for development purposes? And is it possible to shift the building and share the distance equally between the two corners? As I see that we're encroaching on the easterly portion on Queen, so I just have a question for that.
Ms. Bridge.
Through the chair, so the way that the zoning by law has been structured is to set a deeper front yard depth than typical off the Trow Street frontage. So I think, as I mentioned, Trow is considered the front lot line. So the recommended zoning by law sets the building back twenty-one meters from the Trow Street lot line, which essentially means no new buildings could be built there in the future without a zone change amendment.
Okay. My second question, if I could, Councilor Ritzma, would be to actually, Mr. Crinklaw. There's much talk about the five-meter setback along easement for future road allowance. With regard to that, it's a connecting link corridor. It's not contemplated in the city's transportation master plan for any additional lanes. If Mr. Crinklaw could just speak to when that plan was last updated and whether he's had any conversation with the province with regard to that. I'm not aware of any, but I want to make sure that we know that answer.
For the chair, to your worship. There hasn't been any discussion recently in regards to the master plan or any of the work that's being done on Ontario Streets that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Anything further, Mayor Matheson?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of council with questions for Ms. Elliott? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Elliott. Next, we're going to move down to Mr. Anandale. Are you available on the line? Ms. Clerk? Damn clerk. There he is. Thank you, Mr. Anandale. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair Ritzma and committee members. Thank you for this opportunity to address the Planning and Heritage Committee this afternoon. By way of introduction, as you, as you can see, I'm Gary Anandale from two sixty-nine Coburg Street. I share a border with three hundred and ninety Ontario Street. I also represent a group consisting of Coburg Street, Queen Street, Trow Street residents and other concerned residents by way of an informal group titled Queen Trow Development. There are some seventy members. There is a little bit of overlap with the Farah members. I've also been working with Farah and concerned residents of Hamlet Board, as well as other local groups. From the very outset, I would like to say that we are not opposed to development or intensification of the area. But we're more than happy, I must state, to see appropriate development and appropriate intensification of. We believe that the official plan is a pact with the residents of Stratford. We expect that the explicit protections afforded to stable residential areas and heritage areas and corridors be protected. We live in this area precisely because of its heritage character, and to have that destroyed is something that we could not contemplate. Please know that intensification is defined by the provincial policy statement as meaning the development of a property, site, or area at a higher density than currently exists through a redevelopment, including the reuse of brownfield sites, B, the development of vacant and or underutilized lots within previously developed areas, C, infill development, and D, expansion or conversion of existing buildings. So we would like you to know that intensification has already been met by the addition of two new residences on Coburg Street and the conversion of the red brick homes sometime back to duplexes. Further intensification would therefore be met by simply providing additional housing on the vacant lot at three hundred eighty Ontario Street. Nowhere in the provincial policy statement or the official plan does it state that such radical intensification as as proposed is desirable or required. As we've just heard, this intensification is not monitored in the city, and therefore, this proposed development may certainly be surplus to any intensification targets. I would point out that the Federation of Canadian Municipalities publication called Housing in My Backyard: A Municipal Guide for Responding to Limby States. Most of the time, citizen engagement is a very positive and healthy sign of a local democracy. Sometimes a housing proposal is just wrong for the neighborhood. It's out of scale, violates heritage character. It's out of scale, violates heritage character. Or has inadequate infrastructure or support services. This is one of these occasions which, despite Planning's management report. Is simply out of scale, violates the neighbor's heritage character and should be rejected. To date, we have not seen any report or consideration of this proposed development by Heritage Stratford. And also believe that Heritage Stratford should be producing a report considering this development proposal. And I, in fact, requested my submission to be forward to Heritage Stratford for a review. As you may know, we hired a lawyer and professional planner to assist us in. Preventing what we believe is inappropriate development and to achieve some form of negotiated settlement over buildings. That do meet the provisions of the official plan for this area. Our heritage planner will demonstrate that the affected area. Has significant heritage in accordance with section two point six of the provincial policy statement. From a citizen's point of view, it defies logic to state that it is appropriate. To create a new high density residential area on half a block of land in the middle of a stable residential area. When more modest intensification is equally appropriate in terms of the official plan and provincial policy statements. Certainly residents expect the city to respect the official plan and zoning bylaws. And not to disregard or twist the provisions of the official plan and zoning bylaws. In order to satisfy a developer's desire to maximize profit. Development elsewhere in the city, such as maybe McCarthy Road or, you know, there's certainly other areas. Is much more appropriate where a bigger lot can be provided. And I will speak to that lot size shortly. The planning report should, in accordance with the official plan. Provide information to council that it has a mandate to preserve our heritage. The city has deemed heritage as important to Stratford. If heritage is not protected and this development is approved. How are you going to stop other developers from buying up and tearing down homes anywhere else in Stratford? There are a number of recent news reports that confirm this trend. It's not something that we're imagining. It's happening. How will council preserve Stratford's heritage, which is one of the big motivations for people to visit Stratford? Sections two point six point one of the provincial policy statement state. Significant built heritage resources and significant cultural heritage landscapes shall be conserved. Because the heritage impact assessment and archaeological assessment has not been prepared by the developer or the city. Only we have done this. There is no indication that planning has properly properly recognized heritage and archaeological concerns. Or that they will be conserved. Again, this is inconsistent with section two point six of the provincial policy statement. The management report does state that the subject lands are also within heritage area. And heritage corridor as identified on schedule E of the official plan. The official plan requires that where infilling with a heritage area. And heritage corridor is proposed, the inherent. Heritage qualities of the area or corridor will be retained, restored and ideally enhanced. I would refer you to the to page twelve or page seven of the management report. And more specifically at the picture looking northwest along Ontario Street. There is a very significant maple tree behind three hundred and seventy Ontario, Ontario Street, the old State Farm Building. MHBC and Chancery have given an illusion regarding the height of their building. When you look at the tree behind three hundred and seventy Ontario Street. You will notice that that is in fact a height of the proposed building. The forced perspective employed by MHBC hides the fact that the building is going to be that high. How can this height possibly be considered retention or enhancement of heritage qualities? A more appropriate development without changing the official plan will retain or enhance the area's heritage qualities. The residents proximate to the proposed buildings will have their sense of place utterly destroyed by this building. Significantly, you will notice that there is very little reference to Coburg Street in the MHBC and management reports. Yet the Coburg Street residents are the most affected. As the lot is so narrow for the building, that it will tower over them even with the proposed setbacks. Those setbacks, though, are completely occupied by parking. So even though the setback is there, there is no buffering provided to alleviate the parking issues. That will be or the vehicle issues that will be experienced by Coburg Street residents. In our view, planning also. Has not considered the issue of shadowing and privacy for that matter, but specifically shadowing to be of any concern. In the package today, you will see that Dr. Richard Wood has written. Confirming that the winter shadow effect is significant. And planning and heritage, sorry, planning and MHBC's opinion that it can be discarded.
Nine minutes.
Is something that that can be overturned by Dr. Wood's opinion. The management report states there are no significant trees or other natural features located on the subject property. This is wrong. There's a very significant maple tree that the developer has stated would have to be cut down. And there's an endangered species cucumber tree. Which the Ministry of the Environment is currently investigating and until the MOE's report is complete. This development cannot be, cannot continue. Unfortunately, my time is up, but the management report brings up four additional buildings to justify support for this proposed development. These buildings all compare apples to oranges. Planning did not provide any pictures of the buildings. You look at a satellite area of those buildings and you will see the following. Four fifty six Lawan Avenue. A lot size is approximately eight thousand eight hundred square meters compared to three thousand seven hundred odd, three thousand seven hundred and forty seven. In our case where the road allowance is taken away. Two fifty five, two thirty five and two fifty five John Street. The, the building was actually a school prior to being made into residences. The developer also sold the lot once zoning change had been provided. And the apartment buildings within built and. Know whether Chancery will do exactly the same thing. The thirty front street, for instance. You'll notice that the lot size is probably about ten thousand square meters. And again, two buildings, our little lot is three thousand seven hundred square. Square meters. None, none of those buildings' backyards are compromised by the buildings.
Mr. Annandale? I've got to call your, your time here.
And in summary. Please ask Chancery and MHBC to withdraw this application. Consult with us regarding appropriate development and resubmit a proposal that respects the official plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Annandale. I appreciate it. Questions from council? From Mr. Annandale? Questions from council? Seeing none? We are going to move on to Mr. Battle. Are you available online? I see. You're there and the floor is yours whenever you're ready. Just give him a moment to connect. Mr. Battle, are you available? The damn clerk? Have we made connection with Mr. Battle?
Through the chair, we are working to get him connected. Mr. Battle, if you can hear us, you may need to press star six. Through the chair, I do see. That we have Mr. Ritz on the line. Perhaps we can move to Mr. Ritz and then retry and connect with Mr. Battle following that presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Ritz, are you available? And once again, unmute yourself, Mr. Ritz. There you go. Thank you, Mr. Ritz. First, a couple housekeeping items. Our. Damn feedback. Is there something I should do with my phone to eliminate that?
Mr. Ritz, if you can mute the sound on your computer.
Good afternoon. This is James Battle speaking.
Mr. Battle, just give us one moment. We had moved on to Mr. Ritz, but if Mr. Ritz wants to sort the. The feedback piece, maybe we will move back to Mr. Battle. So go ahead, Mr. Battle. That's fine.
Go ahead now.
Yes, the floor is yours.
Yep. Well, thank you, Chairman Ritzman. Good afternoon, Mayor Matheson and councillors. By way of a formal introduction for the record, I serve the Festival Area Rapier's Association, also known as Farah. As co-chair within the residential footprint bounded by Parkside to Nile and Ontario to Lakeside. For the past twenty five years, it has been our mission to champion resident interests in all matters with respect to planning, development. Sustainability, infrastructure and safety. Paramount to these lofty objectives, Farah is first and foremost all about respect. Respect for the integrity or sense of well-being within our neighborhoods, which is the essence of good planning. Respect for our heritage corridors, which makes Stratford a unique community. Respect for the stable character of our streetscapes, which are protected by our city's official plan. Respect for the natural environment, which distinguishes each and every neighborhood for the better. And respect for incremental infill residential growth, which mitigates the value proposition. For both approximate resident communities as well as the city as a whole. To be perfectly clear. We say yes to good development, which conforms to the city official plan. But on the contrary, we say no to bad development projects, which are serious contraventions to status zoning bylaws. Keeping in mind the propensity for dangerous precedent setting, which may negatively disrupt other stable neighborhoods across the city. However, what is considered reasonable for one party may not be the same for another. So what does Farah mean by the term reasonable development? As it is likely that everyone in this meeting has a different view as to what may define reasonable development. Perhaps, this is perhaps the reason why many residents of groups appear here planning in heritage over and over again. As there appears to be no common vision for what is deemed to be reasonable. Regarding the parameters of reasonableness, permit me analogy, if you will. In that the Ontario four hundred series highways are speed rated at one hundred kilometers an hour. Yet many find one hundred and twenty kilometers per hour to be reasonable, a reasonable rate of speed. However, when a vehicle whizzes by at a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty kilometers an hour. Most drivers would admonish this behavior as both reckless and unsafe as well as unreasonable. Therein lies the challenge. Where do we draw the line? With respect to the specifics of the Chancery application for amendments to both the city plan. As well as stable R three residential zoning, kindly permit me to be inquisitive. Does reasonable mean that Planning IDS expects this committee? To give the subject applicant as represented by MHBC planning a green light? Despite the fact that there has been no material changes to their initial submission in first quarter of twenty twenty. And their formal resubmission of June fifteenth, twenty twenty one. A further test of reasonable is that this committee is being asked to approve official plan and zoning amendments. Which largely ignores the comments resulting from the management's, from management's formal planning consultation. Pardon me, management's formal consultation review committee meeting of April twenty twenty. Which begs the question as to why the applicant and planning staff have not fully mitigated the essential due diligence sensitivities. Previous identified with the three seventy to three ninety six Ontario Street project. Does reasonable mean that we ignore our heritage corridors as defined within the city's official plan with respect to scale, density and height? Does reasonable mean that we create obvious conflicts of interest relative to the city's official plan? When Planning IDS condones the complete elimination of any distinction between sections four point five. Which is R three stable residential neighborhoods and section four point six, R five new high density residential neighborhoods. Does reasonable mean that we as a community are complicit with the demolition of three historic two-story red buildings? Only to replace them with a thirty four unit multiplex spanning a full block from Queen to Trow? Does reasonable mean that it is a developer's right to quadruple the local height elevation by some twelve meters? With a four story, possibly six, plus pitch roof multiplex. Such that the approximate residents lose their privacy as well as personal well-being in terms of both being dwarfed and shadowed. Please note as well that the optics of the Chancery development are depict, as depicted by the artist's rendering, is very deceptive. As both the scale and the height of the structure are severely misrepresented. Does reasonable mean that residents of butting the developments bear the burden of overhead illumination in their backyards all night long? In order to accommodate a new parking lot, not to mention the noise. Does reasonable mean that the city turn a blind eye to traffic gridlock on Queen Street between Coburg and Ontario? Which also presents an unsafe situation, particularly when the festival season, the festival theater returns to full venue. And does reasonable mean that we in this forum all agree to toss our official plan into the proverbial garbage can? In lieu of just sticking with the plan? In the context of Farah, I would hope not. Just a few weeks back, this council wrestled with a very similar storyline relative to the Larson Development Project on Daly Avenue. And there was one comment made by councillor Vassalakos, which struck a chord with me as a reasonable approach to mitigating matters of this nature and scope. To quote. This is why I really think we need something like an urban infill design document. That then could be appropriately applied to all applications and not just be cherry picking. Or choosing to be challenged when our prerogative is required. Most everyone present in this forum today is aware that the Stratford is in need of new residential development, either freehold or rental. Yet until we have a planning consensus on how to implement this objective through a process of good governance. Within the rules of the city's official plan, all stakeholders will be plagued by application after application. Which requests that this committee approve housing proposals which are egregiously beyond the scale of anything reasonable. And at the end of the day, just wrong for many of our neighborhoods across the city. Ladies and gentlemen, let's hope that we will eventually get it right by assessing redevelopment the right way for all the right reasons. Pardon me. Editorially speaking, this meeting is much more than an arbitrage exercise which potentially polarizes both stable residential neighborhoods. And new development opportunities. What is at stake is, what is at stake is more critical for this committee. Either the city's official plan is sustained as a standardized basis for all development projects. Or alternatively, Planning IDS will ignore it altogether as the management report provides little wiggle room between the rock and the hard place. If the consensus be the former, then the Chancery plan as it stands today. Should be rejected as an egregious affront to our planning sensibilities. Or at least defer to an unfixed date such that Planning IDS staff can mitigate a reasonable plan, which works to the benefit of all stakeholders. On the other hand, if this committee favors the latter by positioning the provincial policy statement as the be all and end all for all development applications. And approves the motion to advance Chancery's plan as it stands today in lieu of our city plan. Then I suggest a terrible precedent with unintended consequences will be the unfortunate outcome. The provincial policy statement will evolve as our primary basis for all planning assessments. The city official plan will be reduced to a useless document, leaving most city residents confused or even outraged. And Planning IDS will be rendered to nothing more than a service which panders to every developer's extreme interests, which appears to be the case today. At the end of the day, this is not my reason, vision for reasonable development within Stratford's stable residential communities. With significant heritage character. I thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Battle. Questions from council? Seeing none? I'm wondering if Mr. Ritz is now available. We had jumped ahead to him and I wanted to see if he was available at this time. The damn clerk?
I'm here.
Oh, we still have Echo. Mr. Ritz, you want to try your volume, your sound once again?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, but we're still receiving a significant.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, go ahead. The floor is yours.
So you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, some housekeeping items. Our lawyer is not available. She had to leave at 4:40. She thought she'd be on sooner. After me, I believe, comes Marcus, and then she might be back at that point in time.
Would, would you like to delay your presentation till that time if, if it works?
No, no, I'll go now.
Okay.
But we're gonna put Nancy at the end. Okay?
Yep, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, Chair and Council. As an architect, I worked with developers to develop a site for the highest density yet remain within the official plan. The proposed development at 370, 396 Ontario Street. So what does zoning in the official plan permit? Is what is being proposed by Chancery too much and that should be on too little? Based on the official plan, the PPS, what is the proper amount of intensification? Next slide, please. The current zoning M U R to, to enhance the development, I would look at adjacent properties to the north, which are R2-1, and to the south, R2-2 and R3. Next slide. I'd also look at the building tags permitted by these zones. As you can see, there, this is duplex, triplex, and quadplex. This is incremental development. Next slide. Please note that although the developer is requesting R5-2 zoning, there's not enough land as they are asking for concessions on exterior side yard setback, interior side yard setback, and rear yard setback. Currently, six meters from the street line, not the 7.5 meters as required by Schedule B of the zoning bylaw. The yellow on this slide indicates where it's infracting the, what is the true limits. Every project I've worked on in this city, there was never a consent or relief from the required setback from the street after the land was assumed by the city for a road wipe. And I've had several developers in town where we've gone through this. If this is allowed, this is unfair to other developers that follow the rules of planning. And my question is, why should this developer be treated differently than others? He should be following the rules and building that building inside that red line. Typically, we show that red line on all of our site plans. Going further, next slide. The highlights on this is, and one that I added today based on this corner lot frontage, required 30 meters, proposed 18, which is 40% less than what's required. Interior side yard, 83% less than what's required. Exterior side yard, 93% less than what's required. Rear yard, 25% less than what's required. Maximum lot coverage is 25% more, even when the zone changed. The site is too small. Maximum height, 100% more. Is this incremental jump from the existing 10 meters? Maximum density, 145% more. Is this incremental? Next slide. What is the highest and best use as for zoning the official plan based on lot width using the duplex dwelling, which is the only type permitted in, in M U R zoning? 14 units is 100% intensification. If we use triplex, we could get 20, based on the R3 lot properties next to us, 21 dwelling units or 55 units per hectare, 150% or quadplexes, 24 units, or 63.9 units per hectare at 171% intensification. What, next slide? What is the highest and best use based on lottery? Again, duplex dwelling, it's 14 units. R2, 16 units. R2-2, 20 units. We're up to 142% intensification. Triplex dwellings at 64 units per hectare, 172%. Quadraplex dwellings, 24 units or 64 units per hectare. I'm doing this with buildings that are presently permitted in R3 zoning. The official plan, next slide, please. Official plan 4533, density ranges for residential development. Low density is 12 to 25 units. Medium density is 25 to 65 units at 37 units per hectare. This is a medium-density residential area. There are other areas in the city noted on Schedule A of the official plan with this type of density. Generally, the density next to, uh, medium-density residential is high density on one side and low density on the other. Next slide. From official plan 358, infilling area, infilling heritage areas, inherited areas and the heritage corridors is shown on Schedule E. The city council, you, will ensure that wherein filling is proposed or municipal services are being installed or upgraded, the inherent qualities of the area or corridor will be retained, restored, and ideally enhanced unless overriding conditions of public health and safety warrant otherwise. Since there are no conditions of public health or safety, then the inherent qualities of this area and corridor will be retained, restored, and ideally enhanced. Next slide. So the best way to meet the objectives of Section 2.6 of the PPS and the official plan would be to maintain, to main, sorry, to maintain the mass and character of the neighborhood is to use or repurpose the existing buildings. The Chancery development ignores PPS 2.6.1 and 2.6.2, and is inconsistent with the PPS, specifically the conservation of significant built heritage resources. This will be described further by the heritage planner that the neighborhood retained. As for PPS 1.1.3.2, renovation to existing structures versus demolition and building new, although they cost the same, requires less energy and has a lower environmental impact, and also provides better value for the dollars the costs replicate detailing that is found in existing structures is usually a lot cost prohibitive in new construction. Next slide, please. The PPS 1.1.3.5, the official plan encourages intensification. Official plan 451 goals and objectives of residential areas to ensure that when intensification of buildings proposed in residential areas, it is compatible in terms of scale, density, and design with neighboring development. Scale and density is not detailing on the building whether there's cables or what other items, because zoning cannot control those architectural features. Next slide. Official plan 451, stable areas. Note modest and incremental. Remember this word, incremental, not abrupt, to generally maintain the structure and character of the immediate surrounding area. Developing a 90-unit tractor development on a 37-unit tractor site is like putting 100-watt bulb in a 40-watt fixture. The fixture will melt or catch fire, just like Ontario Street, where it rode from an area of early 20th century two-story homes to a run of four to six-story apartment blocks, much like Oxford Street. Incremental would be to permit triplexes or quadplexes as permitted by the neighboring R3 zone. This type of building mix offers low cost, lower level and attic apartments. As a developer architect, the following would be a potential approach to comply with the official plan and be consistent with the PPS. To change the M R, U R zoning to R3, and by exercise the opportunity of using the four existing buildings plus the construction of three new buildings on the undeveloped lot, develop them as follows. Next slide. Before I begin, please look at, take a look at the top image of this slide and note the height of the trees with respect to the proposed Chancery building that is shaded. And the dash line above it, there's the outline of the height of a 20-meter-high structure as per the official plan amendment. Very significant that dash line when you look at that existing building at the corner of Trow and Queen. If the official plan amendment is approved, the next developer that purchased the site, which could happen, can request a height increase from four to seven stories within the 20-meter height. It would have to be approved because the official plan amendment permits it. Further, note the lower image on that slide and note the Chancery building shaded in gray in context with the front to Trow and the Queen to Parkview blocks. This proposal, the Chancery proposal does not respect, nor does in, or is an incremental development to the massing and density of the adjacent buildings. Does this maintain or enhance the city's distinctive identity, visual quality, and urban character as required by the official plan, Chapter 6, referred to on page 16 of the management report? Don't think so. Anyways, as per the neighboring R3 zone, we developed the building's triplex dwellings, creating 21 units or 55.9 units per hectare. We have 150% intensification. Next slide. Option two, as per the neighboring R3 zone, develop the buildings into seven quadplex, quadraplex dwellings, creating 28 units or 75.4 units per hectare, and developing all the buildings as quads is 200% intensification. Next slide. So 20 units, 75, 74.5 units per hectare does not comply with medium-density residential development, maximum a 65 units per hectare, meaning this type of intensification is too great. Even when repurposing and adding buildings similar to what is in the neighborhood can exceed 65 units per hectare. Maximum permitted is 65 as per the official plan. Next slide. Option three is what I would call the Goldilocks option. The more desired development might be a combination of three quad, quadraplexes and three triplexes with, say, and those buildings would include six low-cost attic apartments and three lower-level apartments, and allowing the first home of George McTaggan, 396 Ontario Street, remain restored and developed as a duplex dwelling, enhancing it with a wraparound veranda that may have once existed on the original building. This would create 23 units, 61.2 units per hectare with 164% intensification, consistent with PPS 1.1.3.2.
Mr. Ritz, I'm gonna have to ask you to, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Next slide. Would not an official plan compliant development that is consistent with the PPS be better for the community than what is currently proposed by Chancery? A city block of a 12-meter-high four-story wall plus roof with R5-2 zoning that permits a 20-meter-high structure, an apartment building with 34 units, 244% intensification, 90.7 units per hectare, that's 40% more than the maximum 65 units per hectare in medium-density residential areas. The proposed development is too much on too little in the wrong area of the city. The Chancery proposal should not be approved. As illustrated, official plan compliant options can be developed on this site. You have appropriate intensified development that is consistent with the PPS. Let's see a development from Chancery or another developer that does that.
Thank you, Mr. Ritz. Appreciate it. Any questions from council? Or Mr. Ritz? Any questions? Seeing none. We're gonna move on to Mr. Laterno. Are you available on the line, Madam Clerk? Do we have, oh, there he is there. I believe so. Thank you. And you have your hand up. The floor is yours, Mr. Laterno.
Can you hear me?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have my presentation loaded, please? The clerk has that.
Let's give her a few moments here. There you are, Mr. Laterno.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Mayor Matheson, members of council, members of the public, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Mark Laterno. I am the Managing Principal of LHC Heritage Planning and Archaeology. Our firm has been retained by several of the residents and residence associations to provide a preliminary analysis of the proposed development project at 370 to 396 Ontario Street in Stratford. To give a little bit of background, our firm works with a variety of different community groups, government bodies, as well as the development community, and have a number of development clients. So the comments that we, I will be presenting today are reflective of our experience working with these different sectors as well as working across the province. Next slide, please. And I want to start with what may seem to be an obvious statement, which is that Stratford really is quite a special place. It has a significant concentration of cultural heritage resources. Heritage is a key part of the brand of the city. And looking recently at the Visit Stratford website, heritage is one of those elements that's featured as why Stratford is a community that people should come and see and visit and spend time in. Next slide, please. But I think it's also important to note that this idea of heritage character has to be treated very carefully. If we look back to the official plan and the visioning and guiding principles of the official plan that has been adopted by the city, the first under 2.3 is community excellence, which includes maintaining the community's heritage and charm under intensification, incurring, encouraging appropriate intensification and infill, which reflects the existing context of the city with respect to factors such as height and design, and as well heritage conservation, protecting areas, landmarks, and features which provide a physical link to the early development of Stratford and which contribute to its distinct character and sense of place. And I would make a slight modification to that. Stratford has many different unique areas. It has, in each of these sort of subareas of your big heritage area, have a distinctive character. And it's important when looking at any proposed project to try and understand how that local, that context to a proposed project is in that area. It's not appropriate to point to something across a community, in my professional opinion, and say, look at what's done here. This fits here. You really need to look at that context. And I think that's what's important in looking at this proposed project, is that you have a very particular sense of place. You have a very particular sense of character. You have, as has already been mentioned to you today, a very stable neighborhood. You have a neighborhood dominated by one and a half to two and a half story typically brick or framed structures. You have particular setbacks. And ultimately, you have, from a cultural heritage perspective, tremendous integrity. Next slide, please. This is a 1919 photo of Stratford by Bishop Barker. And what was really struck our team as we were working on this project was that even though we are at a preliminary stage in our analysis, you've seen very relatively little change in this neighborhood. Next slide, please. This is 1949 fire insurance plan focusing upon the proposed project site. Now, we've also been doing this analysis both for the, there's a 1920s and an 1880s fire insurance plan. And one of the things that struck us even from 1949, you can see those areas where there has been demolition, where there has been infill. And in fact, most of the infill that has occurred has respected the sort of single-family two-and-a-half-story form. Now, I say form, residential form, because often these structures have been adaptively reused into commercial properties, into other uses. But again, the dominant form has been this two-and-a-half-story, single-family house form. Next slide, please. And as has been identified by a number of people already within this presentation, the city has identified Ontario Street as a heritage corridor, and that includes the area of these properties. The city has identified the oldest parts of the city as a heritage area, which includes these areas with these properties. In my professional opinion, these make these areas significant as cultural heritage landscapes. And indeed, when we go to the provincial policy statement and we look at how we determine what is significant, the PPS says, "In regard to cultural heritage and archaeology, resources that have been determined to have cultural heritage value and interest, processes and criteria for determining cultural heritage value or interest are established by the province under the Ontario, on the, under the authority of the Ontario Heritage Act." And as part of our preliminary work, we've started to do this, looking both as at the area using the Ontario Heritage Toolkit, guidance on potential heritage conservation districts, as well as Ontario guidance on potential heritage conservation districts, as well as Ontario Heritage Act Regulation nine oh six, which looks at whether or not the properties would be worthy of designation under the Ontario Heritage Act. Now I'm going to point out a key word. For significant property to be significant, it does not have to be designated. It just has to have had that process of being evaluated and determined to have cultural heritage value and interest. So as part of our work, we've undertaken a preliminary evaluation of three seventy-three, eighty-eight, three ninety and three ninety-six. And we will ultimately say, well, more analysis is needed. Already at this preliminary stage, we found that each property demonstrates contextual value and could be eligible for designation under the Ontario Heritage Act. And we will point again to the provincial policy statement that under the section one point seven point one E, conserving features that help define character, including built heritage resources and cultural heritage landscapes supports long-term economic prosperity. And again, going back to the figure we showed you, this area is relatively unchanged from when it was constructed. It is ultimately a stable residential area. Next slide, please. We've also considered that the proposed development, and in our professional opinion, the proposed development does not support the sense of place as defined by the character of the built heritage resources and cultural heritage landscapes around Ontario Street. And when we talk about looking at key terms, things like, what do we mean by that sense of place, that character? We must move beyond the materiality of saying, well, it's just brick. It has dable roofs. We need to look to things like form, scale, massing, and how proposed interventions reflect this. In our opinion as well, as a result of the, this analysis having not been completed at this point, in our professional opinion, it's our preliminary analysis that the proposed project is not consistent with section two six of the cultural, of the provincial policy statement. There really has been no analysis of the built heritage resources or cultural heritage landscapes. There's also been no archaeological assessment completed on the properties by the proponent. And we'll come back to that in a second. But ultimately, it must be kept in mind that both built heritage and archaeology are matters of provincial interest. Next slide, please. We've also, in our preliminary analysis, considered the official plan and what does the official plan state? And there's a couple of things that I want to flag very quickly. To this list, I would also add section policy three point five six. In our opinion, again, is that the proposed development does not conform with several of the goals, objectives and the policies. I would point to the definition of what is a cultural heritage resource. And a cultural heritage resources includes buildings, structures, features or areas of architectural historic and
Nine minutes.
Okay, I'm just about done. Recognizes the significance of these. It does not say designated. And I think that's a very key point. I would point to, again, section three, five, six, which says that archaeology will be required in accordance with provincial requirements. Our in-house archaeologists have determined that this property has archaeological potential. And ultimately, the applicant, application has not been completed. And the studies have not been being completed to analyze what is that heritage character. Lastly, I would point to three point five eight. And I would, and you've heard this before at this point, but the heritage areas and heritage corridors show in a schedule E, the city won't share where infilling is proposed or municipal services are being installed. The inherent heritage qualities of the area or corridor will be retained. Ultimately, that requires an analysis of the context of the proposed project. Next slide, please. Ultimately, our preliminary analysis does not preclude development on the properties or along Ontario Street. But the heritage character and value and interest of both the individual properties and the surrounding area requires further research and analysis. Viable sympathetic or compatible development with appropriate intensification is possible. And we would recommend to council and to the committee that the heritage and planning committee defer a decision on this application at a minimum to ensure that the application meets the requirements of the provincial policy statement and the official plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loterno. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Ingram?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Loterno, I was wondering if you consulted with Heritage Stratford at all prior to making your presentation, because I do note that they went through an extensive process evaluating properties within the city of Stratford to list on the non-designated property list for their heritage registry. They had engaged the resources of the Heritage Resource Center at the University of Waterloo to complete that process. And these properties were not included on that list. So I'm wondering if you consulted with Heritage Stratford at all.
We have reached out to Heritage Stratford, but again, we're still in the early stage of our preliminary analysis and haven't had the chance to speak with them at this point.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? See none? Thank you, Mr. Loterno. We are now going to move on to Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Sullivan on the line or available. I'll look at.
I am here.
Thank you very much. Yes, we can hear you clearly. The floor is yours.
Okay, let me start with the summary. I'm not going to be as long as the rest. The, the summary as presented to you in the report orders you to put forward a motion. If you choose to reject it, you have to put forward, according to the planner, have to put forward a motion, including a statement outlining how the recommendation, your recommendation complies with the provincial policy statement and the city of Stratford official plan and how it, public input was considered. I have yet to see a report from a staff or the council on what they should say in a motion. Now, there may be some provincial reason for this that I don't understand, but it just seems very strange. Clearly, if the planning and heritage committee do not approve the staff report, it's precisely because the staff report or the, the development does not comply with the PPS and the official plan. You don't have to go further. You don't have to say why your statement does. You just say it doesn't. The application does seek an amendment to the official plan, which means the application itself is not in compliance with the official plan until it's been amended. So clearly, the staff report's demand is unnecessary and we appear to be included to give the developer a leg up when they make their application to the LBAT for a review. And the land planning appeal tribunal. With regard to specific areas of the provincial policy statement, there is nothing in this report on the issue of climate change. The PPS does refer to climate change as being one of the issues that needs to be considered in making, in dealing with provincial policy statement. And the fact that Stratford has made a declaration of a climate emergency, one would think that that would be one of the considerations given by the planning department, but it's not. The planning department, in fact, mentions only two things towards the end, and neither of them are climate change. The number of vehicles, nearly all of which will be internal combustion engine vehicles, will significantly increase. So there's five dwellings now. There, there is planned for fifty-seven vehicles, vehicle parking spaces. I don't know how many vehicles, but fifty-seven parking spaces. There are no provisions for fifty-seven level two charging stations. So those vehicles would be impossible for residents to own and operate electric vehicles. When someone is in a single detached or a multi-unit detached building, it is not very difficult to find a way to charge a vehicle, but it is very difficult in multi-unit residential buildings, and that's what this will be. In addition, the developer has not suggested nor indicated that this development will be designed with passive building standards. The building will presumably be heated with natural gas. Resulting emissions will be considerably greater than the five homes it replaces and will not even attempt to provide a net zero development. These are considerations that should have been made and they haven't been, not even discussed, not even mentioned. And yet Stratford's in the middle of a climate emergency. One wonders how seriously the planning department takes this. The notion of heritage is part of the remit of you, the committee. Now, I will admit I'm a recent arrival in Stratford. And part of the reason I came to live in Stratford is because of its look, character and feel. All the main entrances to Stratford, that's Huron Street, Ontario Street, Erie Street, provide a visual reminder of the heritage of the community as one comes in on those streets, whether it's walking, bicycling or in an electric vehicle. The city has deliberately through the official plan and other measures sought to protect that heritage look and feel. None of the homes currently along these corridors are four to six story dwellings. It will be somewhat jarring to see such tall edifices in amongst the two and three-story heritage buildings along the corridors. No matter how you pretty it up with a facade, it's still going to be a big lump. A big tall lump with perhaps some peaks on the top to make it look a little different, but it's still going to be a big lump and it'll be thirty-four dwelling units, not five. Now, maybe you, someone has mentioned the issue of precedent. And you as councillors should be extremely wary of precedent here. This development, if approved, has the potential for zoning contagion. By zoning contagion, if, if you agree with the staff report, if you agree that this is an appropriate development for the city of Stratford along a heritage corridor, then this development, then all the dwellings along all the main entryways of Ontario, Huron and Erie will be threatened. Any developer will rely on this decision to demand the same treatment. If the official plan really allows four to six stories in the heritage corridors of Stratford, then you can count on that all of the existing two and three-story dwellings will eventually, maybe not tomorrow, but eventually be raised in favor of high-density four to six-story buildings similar to the present case. No property owner would do otherwise. If I can get a seven-fold value increase on my land, why would I ever do otherwise? And the fact that you would be agreeing that the official plan and the provincial policy statement and the city of Stratford are okay with such a development means you can count on all of the other ones taking place. Ontario Street, Huron Street and Erie Street will no longer look like they do because no other property owner would ever sit still for less than they're entitled to, particularly along these kinds of corridors where the, they are often bought and sold as development potential. The examples given in the report are not on the main heritage entrance, entrances to Stratford. Presumably that is in keeping with the official plan as the report states the goals of up to thirty percent high-density residential, but makes no mention of the current state of the city. And as we heard in the earlier council meeting, planning has no idea what the current state of the city is in terms of how many, are we already at thirty percent? Are we at thirty-five percent high density? We don't know because planning doesn't know. Are we at one percent? This takes us to one point one. I don't know. It's not to say that you as councillors and the planning and heritage committee might not wish that to be the case, that all of Ontario, Huron and Erie Street get torn down and replaced with high-density residential. Maybe that's what you want. That's certainly what's going to happen if this goes forward. But if, if you think you could just say yes to this one and then say no to the rest, give your head a shake. I was involved in an Ontario municipal board hearing against a Walmart in the film district in Toronto, where all of the properties were zoned for making movies and for the studios that were there. And the OMB ruled against Walmart going in there because of what it called retail contagion. It knew, that's the OMB, that to permit one conversion of land for retail purposes would force the city to accept all nearby lands to be converted to retail. And the OMB said, that's, that is not good. That's not good for what, what the city of Toronto wants these lands to be. They, these lands are employment lands for the film industry. Where I came from, when I came to Stratford, in the village of Weston, which is the town of Weston, the city permitted one secondary plan amendment to allow a very tall building in an area zone for eight stories. And within weeks, all of the other landowners along Weston Road and, and beyond had withdrawn their proposals for eight-story and twelve-story buildings and resubmitted them for thirty-story buildings. And having permitted one, the city will be unable to say no, and these developers know this. There are another number of other deficiencies in this planning report, and I have not had time to study them all. The manager of planning refused my request to release it early so citizens would have more than one business day to read it and to respond. I hope you as the committee realize how important this decision is and you take the appropriate time to study the report. I would urge you to accept the request to defer the matter to a later date, to give yourselves and the public time to digest and react to the planning report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions? Counselor Ingram?
Thank you. I did, I'd just like to comment on Mr. Sullivan's remarks regarding the planning report and whether council, should they choose not to approve this application, has to give a statement outlining how our recommendation meets the, the provincial policy statement. That is a provincial requirement. I believe it came into effect through Bill one thirty-nine back in twenty seventeen. So that is something that council would have to do if we chose not to approve the staff recommendation and to deny the application. We would have to come up with some recommendations as to how the application meets the provincial policy statement.
How, how your response meets your provincial policy statement? I get it now. I didn't realize that was a requirement of the, it just seemed so strange. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram. Anything further from council? Once again, thank, oh, Counselor Basilakos, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This might be more for staff, but is, my understanding from the staff report was that each of these applications for creating higher-density residential and infill within the boundaries, there, these don't set precedent. These are all contextual and have, have to be taken separately as each one comes along with that. That is how I read the report and that's also how I read the official plan. So maybe Ms. Bridge, could you clarify about the difference between contextual considerations and, and precedent setting?
Through the chair. So you're correct, Counselor Basilakos, that's exactly how applications would be evaluated. Each application is evaluated against the same official plan criteria based on the development proposal in the context of the site. So this is the same, whether it's an application for high-density residential development or whether it's a new subdivision in our greenfield areas. They're all evaluated on the development proposal in the context of the area.
Thank you.
Anything further, Counselor Basilakos? Anything further from council? Thank you very much. So at this time, I'm going to go back up to see if Ms. Smith is available. I am clerk.
Oh, through the chair. At this time, I do not see Ms. Smith on the line.
Thank you very much. So having having received that information, I want to thank all the presenters of this afternoon for taking the time and, and presenting to council. So moving, moving forward then, our next item is that there is a motion that the correspondence from the following persons regarding official plan amendment, OPA zero one dash two zero and zone change application Z zero six dash two zero be received for information. And this is from the following individuals, James Battle, Shannon Lewis, Vivian McDonald, Arlene Crooks-Best, Elizabeth Puntz, Sarah Topham, Eleanor Kane, Ruth and Jake Van Lewen, Leonard and Ann McDonald, Leslie Walker-Frispatrick, Madeline Donahue, Nancy Davidson and Dr. Arnold Goldberg, Jordan Newell, Erie Annandale, Nancy Smith, Richard Wood. Jordan Newell, Erie Annandale, Nancy Smith, Richard Wood, David Scott, and as per the addendum today, Michelle McDonough, William Calder, and Tony D. Ermo. So I'm moving for those, those, um, correspondence to be received. Councillor Seven, second by Councillor Burback. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. So we are moving to the next item with regards to the, the motions that, that appear in front of you with regards to the planning report, or I should say the official plan amendment application, zero P A, uh, oh, one dash two zero and the zone change amendment Z zero six dash two zero. And there are recommendations there and/or council, you are at liberty to make recommendations as well, or a motion as well. I'll open the floor. Councillor Ingram, followed by Councillor Clifford.
Thank you. I'll move the staff recommendation along with the amendment that Councillor Basilakos had put forward regarding the rear yards, or this, sorry, the interior lot line setback.
Okay, and I'm looking to the clerk to see if she has that piece that was originally, that was formerly mentioned by Councillor Basilakos.
Um, through the chair, if we could just get some revised wording for that additional condition at this time, that would be greatly appreciated.
Councillor Basilakos?
So it's item number five, which is the interior side yard with the one point five meters for the first thirty meters of the lot depth from Troy Avenue to lot line and, um, fifteen meters for the remaining, um, parcel of land. And I think Ms. Bridges can help with the refinement of that.
Does that provide you with clarity, Madam Clerk?
Um, through the chair, I noticed Councillor Ingram's hand is raised.
Thank you. Councillor Ingram?
Thank you. And if we could just amend that again to say a minimum of fifteen meters so that it does provide that, uh, flexibility to go up to that twenty-one meters.
Thank you, Councillor Ingram. So that's been moved and a second for that amended. A second for that. Councillor Burback, thank you. Discussion. Councillor Clifford, and then Councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I believe that a development for that area is long overdue. I actually, I don't own it now, but I used to own a house directly across the road from there. So I believe it's long overdue. Um, the, the old restaurant has been empty for a long time, so I, you know, I believe something should be done. But I don't support the motion on the floor. I don't support an O P change on this. I think, I, I think our, we go, we, we, we go to a lot of work to have an official plan, and, um, I don't believe, um, project that they're talking, that we're talking about here. I don't believe it retains, restores, or enhances the heritage area. I believe a three story would be appropriate, so I do not support the motion on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Clifford. Councillor Gaffney?
Sorry, my apologies, Mr. Chair. Uh, somebody just sent me a message saying that, Ms. Smith was just dialing in, and if I could ask to check and see if she is available now, or have we moved beyond that?
Well, we do have a motion on the floor. I will turn to the clerk for her, her guidance on that.
Um, so through the chair at this time, I do not see Ms. Smith on the line.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gaffney, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Any further discussion with regards to the motion that's on the floor? Councillor Seven, and then Councillor Burback?
Thank you. Uh, I, I do agree with Councillor Clifford's comments that development would be, um, clearly positive for, for parts of that block. Uh, I don't support the motion on the floor. I think, I think, I don't know, I, I have some concerns, but I guess one of the biggest ones for me is that I feel like what I'm concerned about that's not carrying enough weight is the, the idea of a stable residential area. I feel like, you know, because this is on Ontario Street, I feel that that is being very much sort of underplayed. I feel like, I feel like it's being, it's not giving enough weight to, to the discussion. I feel like I, I, I couldn't imagine an area in, a different area, on a different street where the entire abutting properties are, are residential and then development like this is, is proposed or the plan is amended to, to suit that. I think, I think, uh, the existing plan provides for adequate intensification. I think, um, yeah, I, I, there are, there are other issues, but I feel like that would be the main one, I feel. And, and Councillor Clifford raised some good points as well. I think there is definitely, we, we can't take lightly the impact on the, on the heritage aspect or the, the character of the neighborhood. We haven't, uh, we haven't had any discussion about the properties across the road on Ontario Street. We haven't, that hasn't been mentioned. I, I think that that, you know, like I said, in any other area of town, we would certainly not overlook the, the residential homes directly across the street, and I feel like that's been an absent part of the discussion. And, and so I, I won't support the motion, and I would request, uh, a recorded vote.
Thank you, Councillor Seven. Councillor Burback?
Thank you. Um, I do, I wanna echo some of Councillor Seven's and Councillor Clifford's concerns. I, I think the proposal as it stands, I, I'm not comfortable with going outside the official plan, but I do like the intensification, uh, part of it. And I feel like there would be a compromise if this, um, proposal could be made within three stories. And one way to do that would be to make the parking underground. So I would like to see the proposal, uh, stick with three stories, and I, I think that would be a, a reasonable compromise in this situation, so I won't be supporting the motion.
Thanks. Thank you, Councillor Burback. Other comments or questions, Councillor? I mean, I'm gonna turn to Madam Clerk, the, the clerk, please.
Uh, through your chair, apologies for the interruption. I do see Ms. Smith on the line now. Uh, she was included with the motion to hear the delegations. Uh, so if the group would like to hear from Ms. Smith, we could enable that and then continue the discussion.
I, I would support that. So as Chair, I will ask you to invite her into the meeting.
Ms. Smith, can you hear us?
I can hear you, and I've been listening intently, so I'm thankful, uh, Madam Clerk, that you found me somewhere in your list.
So, Ms. Smith, go ahead. The floor is yours, and you have a ten minutes, a ten minute time slot. And at nine minutes, I will acknowledge that one minute wrap up, okay?
Yes, thank you, sir. And my apologies, uh, to all of you, to you, uh, Mr. Chair, and to all committee members, and to all those participating in this process. My, my agenda for this open session showed the committee starting at three fifteen. I had a previously scheduled, um, commitment with, uh, the town of Niagara on the lake to provide them some closed session advice, so I did have to honor that. Um, and I'm just grateful that the timing worked out, that I could share with you, uh, my submissions on behalf of Robert Ritz. Um, you have my letter. I'm not going to reiterate, reiterate what's in my letter, and you have heard from Mr. Ritz, uh, regarding his perspective on the intensification piece. Um, he is an architect, as I'm sure he told you, and has some valuable, a valuable perspective on that front, which I trust, um, you listen to intently. My focus is more on Mr. Ritz as part of a community. Um, the broader community who is looking to you, the planning act decision makers, to make, um, to make a good planning decision here. We forget sometimes, I think, when we do this all the time, as those on planning committee do, and I do in my profession, that for us, these developments come in, we do our thing and move on. For communities, change is permanent. Change, um, will stay with this community for, for a long time, and that's especially important. And I'm sure others have mentioned this in their discussions, especially important in areas that official plans show as stable residential areas. They are unique, and in your official plan, they are given particular status. And I wanna talk about that, um, very briefly with you. Official plans, um, are your guide. Um, it, it fascinates me when we talk about these planning act decision makings about, you know, they're very difficult because we have to balance all these interests. And how do we balance these interests to come up with a good planning decision? You've got a developer before you who wants an approval, and this is an intensification site. There should be an approval here, for sure. But then you have a community that's being asked to accommodate change. So you, those are the two broad interests that you need to balance. And the beauty about our planning system in Ontario is that you don't have to make it up. It's all there for you. All the guiding principles for you to make the right decision under this, um, in this proposal are in your official plan. That is your guide. Um, when I appear before the O M B, the, um, tribunal, the Ontario Land Tribunal, it's now called, board members all the time. There's decisions everywhere that talk about that official plan as a community pact. That's exactly what it is. It is your pact with your community. That official plan has been through a public process, and all in your, in your commu- community, including developers, developers, including residents, have had input into that planet's planning policy. They have had input into that guide that will direct change and will be your guide in deciding what's appropriate at this site. So when you, and I know everyone's been through this, so I'm not gonna repeat it, but I do need to highlight for you that in your official plan, infilling in heritage areas is special. It's special because there's separate guidance for you. I'm sure you've talked about it. Inherent heritage qualities of the area, retain them, restore them, ideally enhance them. So what are those inherent heritage qualities? They are your community pact with your residents to protect them. What are they? I've been through, um, the staff report. They are not delineated. Your, um, the staff report talks about setbacks and built forms. Subjects and built forms. There is a lot more, um, uh, ladies and gentlemen, to, to that, heritage qualities, and I expect Dr. Letourneau has spoken to you about them. That is what you have to protect, the heritage policies. And, um, you do not have a proper, um, uh, pitch from the developer as to what they are and how they will be retained, restored, and ideally enhanced. And Dr. Letourneau can help you with that. Um, I, I'm so sorry that I did not, um, hear him speak. He's modest, but I can tell you that he is one of the leading heritage consultants in Ontario. He advises municipalities throughout this problems, and he helps them. He helps municipalities understand what their community pact is with their communities on heritage. I ask you to listen to him. Um, listen to how he can assist you in moving this forward and respecting the heritage policies of your official plan. Remember, um, these heritage areas, the policies are different than the stable residential policies. And I'm sure, um, I'm sure people have talked about those policies, incremental infill. I don't see that word, unfortunately, in the staff report, incremental infill in the stable residential area policies. Um, so you couple that, which those policies are standard in most official plans for stable residential area policies, but you couple that with a heritage, specific heritage area policies. And I suggest to you that what's before you does not conform to those policies. Very briefly on heritage, um, Dr. Letourneau has spoken to you. I'm not going to get into detail, but what I can tell you, based on my review of the staff report, there is P P S policy that is not referenced. Unfortunately, the references to P P S policy and heritage protection, talk about policy two point six, which is important. Um, but the, but two point six focuses on significant built heritage resources. It's the, the, the theme of heritage protection in Ontario under the P P S is significant. And significant is defined. I'm sure Dr. Letourneau took you through that, but it is defined. And unfortunately, the staff report doesn't get into that, and it's so important because it will fuel decision making on what is proper infill in this case. And I can tell you, I've done many, many of these cases. Um, I, I saw the, the presentation that, um, Mr. Ritz was going to give you, and I'm, I'm sure he did. And it would not surprise me at all that there is a proposal here that provides for the kind of intensification that Mr. Ritz, um, is advocating. And respect, and you will see that those numbers and how this, um, potential development would look would probably be very similar. This is one of those cases, um, where heritage will fuel good decision making. It will fuel, um, a, a, uh, development that Stratford can be very, very proud of. And the way to do that respectfully is to honor the community pact that you have with your community in your official plan. And, um, respectfully, what you have before you does not do that. It does not do that on the heritage front, and it does not do it, um, in relation to the specific intensification policies for this specific area that require incremental infill and infill that we, that, um, that respects the inherent heritage qualities, qualities of the area, area, and quite frankly, can be enhanced in, uh, through a proper proposal. So, um, I respectfully request that what you have before you be denied. There is I'm sorry?
Nine minutes?
Nine minutes, okay. Thank you. Um, there is opportunity, and your legal counsel can help you with this. Um, and I, I have one minute, so I don't have time, um, but there is an opportunity in the planning act for the mediation. I'm going to give you the section. It's section thirty-six, sub twenty-six point one. It's the use of dispute resolution techniques. If you deny this application, the proponents will appeal to the, um, to the O L T. With that appeal, you can invoke this section to ask for mediation, and that mediation process will assist, um, will bring all the stakeholders together so that you can have a discussion, including, um, the city, so you can have a discussion about what would be appropriate infill for that site. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I thank you again for your indulgence, and I am done.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Smith for being available. I have a question from Councillor Bunting, I believe. Is that correct?
Well, it's, it's more of a statement, really, to be honest with you, uh, than a question, but it may end up to be, uh, a motion on my part. But, um, I have, I have looked at this the every way I can. I've read the, the, um, the report by staff more than once, and, uh, done a deep dive, and I've heard from my fellow councillors, and I've heard from members of the public. And the, the height component for myself personally, I, I don't really have an issue of it because they've dropped it already, and there's various other, uh, things at, at play here. But I wonder if, if the developer would consider, uh, uh, some adaptation of his plan to lower the height of the overall structure. And if so, And if so, what is the, and I would ask the city clerk about the options that are available for a, whether it's a deferral or whether it's a referral back to staff to see if there's any ground that we could go rather than, than lose this thing altogether. I, I would, I would like to see some delay for some second thoughts. That's my opinion. What would Madam Clerk say?
May I just pause for just a moment before the clerk addresses that? Were there any questions for our last presenter, Ms. Smith, before we move from there? Were there any questions? Thank you. So I'll go back to Madame Clerk, your response to Counselor Bunting.
So through the chair, a referral motion would supersede the motion currently on the floor. So if that motion were moved and seconded and then carried, the matter would be referred, I would note that there is no discussion on a referral motion.
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, the, I couldn't quite make out the sound I was receiving wasn't that great. So I wasn't sure if you were talking referral or defer. They sound the same to me at the moment.
Madame Clerk?
My apologies. So I had spoken to the referral component. If the matter is referred back to staff, that would supersede the current motion on the floor. And I just did a reminder that there is no discussion on a referral motion.
And prior to going back to Ms. Smith's presentation, I had Counselor Vassalakos' hand was up. Counselor?
I was just going to make a comment, although I guess there isn't a referral motion. So I, I was just going to make a comment. Then one of the concerns that I have here in terms of, of what we're deciding on is given the current zoning and the setbacks and the height, if you were to superimpose that on it, what could be currently allowable with no discussion on our part and no could be as intrusive in terms of sightlines and shading, if not more, than what the developer has proposed in terms of moving the building forward, increasing the back? Or what we think the back, the side yard setback? And so we seem to be getting stuck on the addition of one story, which we can limit this to one story. And aren't really focusing on the fact that the three story can be situated such that it can be less compatible and more intrusive on the neighborhood. And so I, I, I find we're getting a little stuck on, on a story and not on a how, how it would fit. And that's just my comment on that. I just did a quick little drawings on, on the heights and the elevations. And, and it's, it almost falls in an exact same sightline and shadowing line if, if you compare the two.
Thank you, Counselor Vassalakos. Counselor Gaffney?
If I could, Mr. Chair, I will second Counselor Bunting's referral motion.
And, and I didn't acknowledge that there was a referral motion. I, I apologize, Counselor Bunting. Are you, did you make a referral motion? I know we had put the question to the clerk, but I didn't take that as a referral, but, but the floor is yours on that.
Yes, I'll make a referral motion. I'd like to staff.
Thank you. And that's seconded by Counselor Gaffney. Thank you, Counselor Gaffney. Counselors, seven. And there's no discussion?
Thank you. I just would like some clarification what exactly the referral motion is for.
And I'll go back to the clerk.
Through the chair, it is my understanding the intent of the referral motion is to refer the application to staff to have a conversation with the developer slash applicant to see if they would be amenable to a three-story building. But I will look to Counselor Bunting to ensure that that is accurate.
Not specifically to a three-story building, let me, let me get to that, but, but it would be to, for another another layout or some amendments that possibly would meet middle ground. I, I don't want to specify heights or stories, that sort of thing.
I know we're, I know we're treading, thank you, Counselor Bunting. I know we're treading on a discussion piece here, but Counselor Ingram, allow if you.
Thank you. Yes, I just have a process question for Ms. Bridge. She went through the, the timelines of the application. I just want clarification that if, if we refer this application back to staff, is the applicant in a position to appeal based on timelines for no decision?
Through the chair to Counselor Ingram. Yes, that's correct. So the Planning Act gives municipalities 120 days to make a decision on an official plan amendment. If the municipality fails to make a decision within that timeframe, the applicant can appeal that non-decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Generally speaking, when there's productive dialogue going on between an applicant and the municipality and residents, they don't exercise that option, but we are outside of that time period. So there could potentially be a risk of appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and just to Madame, to the clerk, would a referral to the date of our next council meeting, would that keep us inside the timelines?
Through the chair, so any motion made at Planning and Heritage Committee would have to move to council a following regular council meeting. The next regular meeting would be October 12th. I will defer to our manager of planning to see if this conversation can occur between now and our next regular council meeting date.
Ms. Bridge?
Through the chair, so staff can certainly try to connect with the developer to have that conversation prior to the next council meeting. It would be helpful to have clarity in the referral motion about whether it is overall building height we are looking to reduce or the number of stories.
And Madame Clerk, maybe you could reiterate the referral motion?
So through the chair, it is my understanding that the motion presently on the floor is that the, that application OPO1-20 to re-designate 370, 380, 388, 390 and 396 Ontario Street and application Z0620 be referred to staff to discuss with the applicant options available to, to address concerns in order to meet a middle ground. At this time, it, it is quite broad.
Thank you. Counselor Gaffney, I see your hand.
Through you, Mr. Chair, a question to the manager. Are we still within the 120 days or have we exceeded the 120 days?
Through the chair, at this point in time, we have exceeded the 120 days.
Thank you. Based, based on that, that reality, I'm going to withdraw my second on the referral motion. I think the time has come to make a decision. Because if that's true, we're outside 120 days. They could go to MP or to ALPAT tomorrow and say, City of Stratford is, is performing in bad state. So I think this is a decision city council should be making, not some bureaucrats from Trump.
Thank you, Counselor Gaffney. So that referral motion has been, the second or has removed is a second or Counselor Beatty?
I appreciate the 120 days. I'm wondering if this is an effort in good faith to continue the conversation. That if, if this was to be a conversation of, a date or not, I, I think it'd be fair to say that this council is in fact trying to move forward, even though we are looking for additional information. I think to, to ask for staff to give us a little bit of opportunity here. I would hope that anybody would see that is this council acting in good faith. And so I will, I will second that referral motion to staff.
Thank you, Counselor Beatty. So that referral motion is on the floor once again. Madame Clerk? I, I believe the process is fine with regards to the second of Counselor Beatty?
So through the chair, yes, we can have the motion be moved by Counselor Bunting and seconded by Counselor Beatty. Just in response to the manager of planning request for clarity on the motion, is it possible for it to be clarified on whether the intent is to reduce the overall height of the building? Or if there are any other issues that staff or the committee would like staff to review with the applicant?
So I go back to the mover, Counselor Bunting. Is there some specifics that we want to give to the manager of planning to take forward with regards to the referral motion?
It would appear that the height of the structure seems to be a sticking point with a number of counselors. So that would be included, but there could be other things that they, the developer can look at that may, I guess, come to a compromise that will be more acceptable. We, I certainly want to see that block developed. No question about that.
Thank you. And Counselor Beatty, are you in support of that? Thank you.
And I would agree. It is the height. It's not the story. It, just to follow back to what Counselor Vassalakos mentioned. We shouldn't get hung up on the stories, but more, more specific to the height. So if we could have that, I agree with Counselor Bunting. Thank you.
Okay. I, I know we've, we've started with the process piece. We've come up and I think we've come to a spot where we can vote on the referral motion. So I, I will call the question on the referral motion. And if you could keep your hand up, that would be, that would be appreciated. All in favor of the referral motion moved by Counselor Bunting, seconded by Counselor Beatty, please raise your hand. Opposed? Or I, I've, I've missed one. I'm, I'm sorry, Madame Clerk. I, I thought I saw five, four and I, I apologize.
Through the chair, I saw five hands in support and five hands opposed, which would leave your vote.
And I will support the referral motion. And so that motion then is passed. Thank you. Okay, moving forward then, we are going to, I believe there's nothing else with regards, oh, Counselor Henderson, I see a hand.
Yes, do we have to deal with the motion that requests from Gary, Ann Adele and James Battle for consideration of the official plan amendment later made to be received for information? Do we have to actually accept that yet? I mean, we've actually done it, but I mean, I'm just wondering.
Madame Clerk?
Through the chair, as the matter has been referred back to staff, I do not believe it is necessary at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Henderson. Any further discussion, comments? Seeing none, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Ingram, and thank you, Counselor Burback, all in favor. And we're adjourned. Thank you for your fulsome discussion.
Through your worship, returning to your regular council agenda, item 15, council reconvene, item 15.1. Are there any declarations of senior interest made at standing committee and to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Seeing none?
Item 15.2 is committee reports and item 15.2.1 is from the social services committee. And that is to consider two items, item 5.1, the 2021 to 2022 approved alternate AMR on Britannia Street housing project rent increases. And item 15, 5.2, my apologies, Britannia 2022 rent increase and annual rent increases.
Moved by Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor Ritzman. Discussion, Counselor Seven?
Can I ask that we take those separately, please?
Through you worship, yes, those items can be taken separately.
Yes, we'll take them separately. So we'll call the question on the first item, which is item 5.1. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? It's carried. Item 5.2. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? And that's carried.
Item 15.3 is reading of the bylaws. And there are two bylaws listed, being bylaw 11.3, amend delegation authority bylaw and bylaw 11.4 is a confirmatory bylaw. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council president.
Counselor Burback removed, Counselor Vassalakos will second that we take the bylaws 11.3 and 11.4 collectively upon unanimous approval. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? And that's carried. First and second reading of bylaw 11.3 and 11.4 is moved by Counselor Ingram and Counselor Seven seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? And that's carried. Third and final reading of bylaw 11.3 and 11.4 moved by Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Clifford. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fanny? And that's carried. Motion to adjourn this afternoon's proceedings. Oh, Counselor Henderson, you had something?
I'm sorry, I missed this on the consent agenda. I was just wondering, the Almond Arena. How come the parking is going to continue until the spring of 2022? Is the parking lot not ready in the festival?
A part of that was due to seeing when they will be taking down their tent and removing the area from part of that parking lot. And they wanted to make sure that they did have ample parking for the season.
So it could be that it's last time?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anything further? A motion to adjourn has been made and it was seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? And that's carried. Thank you.